Thank you. We have come out of closed session and I can report that the committee, the whole, discussed information on labor relations or employee negotiations in closed session related to union negotiations. With that, we have a recommended motion that the 2026 budget and 2027 projected budget be adjusted to incorporate $227,000 and $235,000 respectively from the one-time funding reserve for the paramedic services department. May ask for a mover. Moved by Counselor Dobrine, seconded by Counselor Patterson. Any discussion? All those in favor? And that motion is carried. At this point in time, we will call a 10-minute break, so if we could reconvene at 11:25, we will carry on with the agenda. Thank you. Sorry, 35, 11:35, not that quick of a break.
Yeah.
If I could just please invite our committee, the whole members back to the horseshoe? Okay, so we are reconvening and we have been in closed session. We reported out. We have just come back from our break and we are now then going to be continuing on slide 37 and 38. Well, 37 is just the introduction. So slide 38. And Director Spicer, we look back to you.
And I'd just like to give a bit of an update. So before the closed session, I had mentioned that with the the opportunities that we mentioned about reducing the debenture payments and increasing the forest revenue, that would reduce the current residential rate from 6.68% increase to 5.61. And with the the motion that was passed when we came of closed, that reduces the levy increase to 5.33%. Next, we'll talk about the supported recommendations. So at the November 26, 2025 Budget and Finance Committee, there were items that were referred to county council for further discussion, as the minutes from that meeting won't pass until next week on the 11th. There were a few things that were discussed and there's social pinpoint software for, and it's a levy requirement of $30,000, a proposed asset management contribution increase of $1,541,800. And there was discussion about the GTR fare increase. So currently, that fare is $5 a ride, including HST. If we increased it by a dollar, this would result in an approximate increase in revenue of about $4,800 for eight months, just because of, you know, there's the one small route that's going from Dundalk to Orangeville and based on what we're currently seeing in ridership. So those were the three areas that they wanted referred back to the meeting today. And the next slide is about social pinpoint, and I'll let Rob speak to this as it's within his budget.
Thank you, Mary Lou, and through you, Madam Warden. Yeah, just was gonna speak to you a little bit about social pinpoint this morning and what social pinpoint is. Some of you will know because you have it at your municipality. I think Great Highlands is currently operating it. This is a digital engagement platform, and what this platform does essentially is it provides the tools to increase the accessibility and ease of engagement with the community by bringing an online website to the people so that we can better engage with them and get their input and inform them on projects and services that we are delivering to the community so that they can understand them better and provide input on those services. We've been exploring the possibility of building a regional platform for digital engagement. We, and that's why we are looking at social pinpoint specifically. It's somewhat unique in that it would allow there to be kind of a Gray County hub that interconnects with local municipal engagement sites as well, so that our residents could engage on both upper-tier and lower-tier matters, all in one centralized place. These initial conversations have been going on with the local CAO's group as well. We've had some demos with local municipal staff so that they could see that as well and see the way that an integrated program could work together. And really, the benefits of these platforms for us in this room is that it gives us data and information to better inform decision-making around the horseshoe or at the management level, because we can see what matters most to people and the data that comes in through these platforms, it's really validated and it's easier to quantify and qualify the data that's coming in so that we can trust it better and it gives us something that we can also include in reports back as well, so that we could gauge sentiment on proposals. And just looking ahead for the next two, three, five years, we do know that there are some Gray County specific opportunities coming up where we'd really benefit from having a platform like this. When you look at complicated topics like strategic planning or even things like the road transfers, it's really a more comprehensive way that we can speak to the community about these complicated topics and get their feedback on those. So the cost is $30,000 for the platform. Now, that budgeted amount is the Gray County go-it-alone cost. But as we have looked at this from a regional model perspective, if we do get participation from municipalities to go in on this as well, there is a cost of a reduced, or the opportunity for reduced rates for everyone that is participating, it's participating in it. So that Gray County's 25, or 30,000 would be down closer to 25 annually, and then each local municipality would need to pay for the platform as well, but their rates would be reduced as well. But again, all of those platforms then would talk to each other. So if someone goes to the Chatsworth one to engage on something, on arenas or something like that, they would also see opportunities to engage on county matters while they're there. Likewise, if they came to the county site and they were interested in recreation, they could filter by recreation and see what's available in their own municipality. So that's just a quick overview of that.
Thank you. Just hold on a moment, just in case there are any questions in terms of that social pinpoint, and we'll go to the Deputy Warden.
Thank you, Madam Warden, and thank you, Rob, for the description of this software. Do we have any kind of indication what the participation rate is for these type of softwares? Over the years, I've seen different attempts to get, you know, the pulse of the community, so to speak. And inevitably, if a hot topic lands on the floor, you get a pile-on effect for that topic, but nothing else. And over time, people start to say, screw it, I'm not gonna bother, it doesn't matter. I have to say, I think if we're all doing our job, we know what the hot topics are, we know what our community is saying, we know what our ratepayers are thinking. So I struggle supporting this, I'll be honest. Data is important, and the data that we do get typically is accurate, but is it enough? I, I don't know. Thank you.
Thank you. Manager Hatton, did you want to reply?
Yeah, just to that point, certainly, you're right, there are going to be topics that get a lot more engagement, and actually, if you have a controversial is maybe not the right word, but something like that to launch the platform, that's fantastic. With these platforms, I think you get as much out of them as you're willing to put into them. So the amount of effort that the municipality is willing to to use the platform and put projects and services on there and make it something that the community regularly wants to check in on and they really feel a part of it, I think that's where you build momentum over time and you get that repeated participation. And I absolutely agree that you, as the counselors in the community, you're talking to people, you're hearing from people all the time, and you do have a good sense of the pulse. But I know that there are more introverted community members out there as well that are less likely to engage in person, and these online digital opportunities are good for them and as well people that have maybe less accessibility to go out to community events and other places where you may be, they would be able to participate digitally as well.
Okay, thank you. We'll go to Counselor Greg next.
I appreciate staff looking for alternatives in terms of ways of funding the initiative. I do disagree with it fundamentally. I'm against the expenditure on it. Doesn't matter where it's funded from. I was umpiring one night in Desborough when they had the community meeting about closing the arena. I don't think when there's hot topic items, you need an extra social medium beyond, we're already allocating staffing resources to maintain Facebook, Twitter, Instagram. I think the Rogers campaign looked like a great TikTok initiative as well that was just presented. There's so many mediums I think we're already into, and every time we add one, it's either acknowledging we have additional staff capacity that can accommodate it, or you're going to have to add capacity in the backend to fund everything. You mentioned about explaining the services we are offering to citizens. I would just say, it's my opinion, if we have to explain the services we are offering, it is not just providing services that we're doing, rather, we're looking to create them. And I see our role is just to strictly maintain ourselves as a service provider. So I think we're going a little bit out of our lane for what we need to with this initiative, so I would be against it.
Okay, we'll go to Counselor Echols next.
Thank you very much, Madam Warden, and through you to Rob, and kind of touched on by Counselor Greg. The collection of data. And I guess what scares me the most about this is that fact right there. Do we have the capacity? Do the communications at the lower tier individuals have the capacity to get out of that, the data, the data analysis? That's one thing that I keep hearing, you know, data, data, different corporations that they've dealt with, oh, we've got all of this data. But the next thing you know, they back to you and say, yeah, I need three more new, more new people. Where does the web go? How many more people are we gonna have to be able to run this and collect the data out of it? That maybe would benefit us in the decision-making. Going forward, it's the creep that scares me on this as well, too.
And through you, Madam Warden, I wouldn't anticipate any additional additional staff resourcing being needed through this, like through the reporting features on these platforms, they summarize that data for you. They have built-in capabilities to scan the comments and help judge sentiment. Depending what features you're using, it can give you an average of the sentiment on something if you're asking people, like, out of a scale, how much they agree with something, they can summarize that. I really don't think that there would be any additional staff time going into the data, it would just be there, present to us, that we could pull from it and share it, rather than when we use social media, our best real gauge of sentiment there is thumbs up. And if you would have told me 12 years ago that I was gonna judge the effectiveness of my marketing campaigns by how many thumbs up I get on something, I wouldn't have believed you, but this, this takes it a little bit beyond that and gives us something more that we can trust.
So it sounds like we'll be able to downstaff, because it seems that there's gonna be a lot of AI in this, and I'll be quiet.
Okay, we'll just go over to the CAO.
Through you, Warden, and thank you for all the comments and questions regarding this. I think I know this to the Budget and Finance Committee. We did have discussions with this amongst the local CAOs. This, and we did, we had a demo of social pinpoint with, with the CAOs. Definitely, the group consensus was seeing value with the platform. Again, whether or not you can roll this out across regionally with every municipality on board day one, probably not, but over time, we think there is, there's definitely merit to explore this. Having that consistent regional platform and message to be able to communicate and engage with our residents, especially when we're working on regional projects, I think there's merit and benefit. When we're working on regional projects, I think there's merit and benefit to that. Um we've seen and talked to a number of municipalities that have rolled this platform out and have seen a tremendous benefit from that. Um and and as Rob has indicated, there's there's some reporting tools that are built right in. Uh that will allow us to um gather some of that data and information very quickly to be able to report back to council. Uh when we're um looking for that feedback from residents and community with respect to whatever project or initiative that we're working on at that time. So um so that's why staff are bringing this forward as a recommendation. Obviously, we'll take council's direction in terms of where you wanna go with this, uh but just wanted to provide that further feedback.
Okay, thank you. Uh we'll go to councillor Dobrine.
Thank you. And through you, Rob, the social pinpoint. You you you're looking at social pinpoint, but have you considered or compared it to iMatter? A small I, capital M A T R. They were at the AMO conference and Roma conference and they've been reaching out. I don't know enough about them. But um they also provide a platform similar to this where it's a secure engagement tool. There may be maybe a value just having a look and and comparing the two. And perhaps there's some cost differences as well. Are you familiar with them?
Yeah, through you, Madam Warden. Uh we, I'm not actually familiar with that specific one. And I have uh looked at a lot of engagement platforms over the last multiple years. Um which what really stood out was social pinpoint that we started going down this path more seriously in the last year. Uh was that regional model piece and the benefits that we have uh to the community. If we can make it simpler for them to engage at both the upper and lower tier levels. So I'll have to look into that one. Uh to see if it also offers that similarly. Um but in comparing this particular tool with other engagement platforms that are offering a regional model. Um this one did come out for sure as the preferred software. Uh and um in in reaching out and speaking with other communities, I have learned as well. Um the city or the uh region of Waterloo was the first or one of the earlier adopters of this platform. And they do it on the regional level in Waterloo. Um and it it's been quite successful with them and they have met uh smaller local municipalities that have come on with them as well. Uh and they had been with previous uh other providers out there before. And they said that the the service was night and day improved when they've moved to this platform as well.
Okay, thank you. Looking around the room, we'll go to councillor Kentner.
Uh thank you and through you, uh 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 Warden Matasovs. Uh I could use a little help just understanding how we uh spend thirty thousand dollars and get a point zero four percent decrease in in the residential rate. Uh am I missing something here? I I just don't quite get it.
Through you, Madam Warden. Um to respond to councillor Kentner's question. If we fund this in the twenty twenty six budget from the one-time funding reserve. It would reduce our levy requirement by thirty thousand dollars, which is a zero point zero four percent decrease in the residential rate.
If I may, a supplementary, I just uh I I think we're a bit early. Because uh I know in Meaford, you know, we're, we budgeted a big number for a complete revamp of a. Of a really tired and awkward system uh website. And I I just am unaware that we, whether or not our staff i- is interested in this or not, I just don't know. And would be, I as I say, I just think we're maybe a bit early on this one. Um and that nothing is changing faster than the software world. I don't think so. Thank you.
Uh and through you, Madam Warden, I I have been in contact with staff at the municipality of Meaford and they are interested in this as a platform, yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, here, um we'll go to councillor Eccles.
This is social sourced? Or are we gonna go with an RFP? For this? That's on the purchasing, it it. Yeah, that's my question on that. So we already decided that social points the one and we've gone through purchasing to come up with this? I don't really remember. But then again, we don't see all the RFPs that go out on that. Thank you.
Yeah, so this has been discussed with the purchasing team and I um I mentioned region of Waterloo earlier. When they issued their are their RFP, um they did include clauses in that. That said, other public sector organizations in Ontario could follow along on their RFP as well. Um and in speaking with our finance department between. Um that we could use that for sure, as well as all of the um the working demos that have gone on and checking out other. Platforms, um knowing that this platform does have the features that we like, we would be able to move forward with social pinpoint, yeah.
Okay, and councillor Greg, great.
I'll just put a motion on the floor that this expenditure be removed from the twenty twenty six budget, um and that's not. Uh speaking to where it's funded from, but that it be removed. Uh I don't think it it's been identified by any of the eighteen counselors throughout the last year that there's a gap or. Uh that the requirement has been spoken to on behalf of council. I understand where staff might be coming from in terms of identifying different engagement processes. But I haven't heard any discussion around this table in terms of uh motivating or initiating uh the action. Um or needing to identify a a correction to a problem that hasn't been spoken to yet at the table here. So I'll just put that in the floor that it be removed from the two thousand twenty six budget. Thanks.
Okay, uh it's been moved by councillor Greg and seconded by uh councillor Mackey. So it's now on the floor for discussion. I'll ask uh Madam Clerk if you can make sure that it's visible on a screen. Let's see it on screen. Just making sure that everybody can see it as well. There we go. Okay, so it's recommended um that the social pinpoint, this that social pinpoint item be removed from the twenty twenty six budget. That was moved by councillor Greg, seconded by councillor Mackey. Um and that's the wording we're looking. Okay, thank you. It's now on the floor for discussion. We'll begin with councillor McQueen and then we'll go to councillor Pringle after that.
So I I I'm seeking a little bit of clarity and just asking and I'm just. So as we move along in social media. And uh you know, probably fifteen years ago, we all had BlackBerrys and now we all have iPhones or whatever. And I know the platforms come along with that. I guess my question is, does this capture the younger cohorts? So today, my kids don't use email. They do Facebook a little bit, their Instagram or Snapchat or whatever news coming on. The form, the the platform keeps changing. But I don't know enough about this and I think a lot of us around here. But is this, and we always struggle to reach out to the younger cohorts, is this something that would capture that? Uh that cohort group, is it, is it more of a format? You know, like I don't think anybody writes a letter and says, you know. Dear Brian Mellon, how are you today? Like, you know what I mean? It it keeps moving or our our connection and contact keeps moving. So can you explain a little bit? And maybe we need a demonstration. I I don't know, but so that's my question. Does this capture the younger cohorts?
Uh through you, Madam Warden, um. I I I wouldn't say that it is going to specifically target younger cohorts. Uh it's probably going to be more appreciated. Because uh younger people are more apt to use a digital tool than to go out and engage in person. I think that's just something that we've, we recognize personality wise is changing with the generational gap. Um but that said, we still need to let that generation know that the tool exists. So we're still gonna need to use other tactics to prom- to promote a platform like this to all demographics so that they know to go there and engage. Uh but I do certainly feel like this would be more appropriate than a public meeting uh or. Um newspaper promotions, those sort of things to uh to younger audiences, yes.
Okay, thank you. We'll go to councillor Pringle.
Thank you, Warden. I just was curious to know if uh council would be an appetite for something like this, come back to the joint municipality group committee. To do more research on it, follow up to see if there is an advantage to a municipality being part of it and without expending a whole pile of money on it. But I just wondered if some of the joint municipality group could look at to get a better idea of understanding of what we're looking for.
Okay, I know that you've touched already with talking staff to staff, but do you have any comment on that suggestion that it goes to the joint committee? Manager Hatton? Oh, uh uh actually, we'll look to the CEO for that.
Uh through you, Warden, um happy to take direction of council, obviously. Um that is definitely a a topic if if directed by this this council body. That we could bring forward to the joint municipal service committee and provide them with a an update uh or further information. Um do a demo uh with that that committee and and maybe do a demo back with the the council, depending on the discussion or direction. So again, happy to take the direction from council uh with respect to that, but it's it's one avenue that could be explored.
Okay, thank you. Um and we'll go to councillor Greg. I have a question too, but if it's not asked, then I will um I will ask my question afterwards. So councillor Greg.
I would just say it's two separate conversations. The first is the purity of the motion that's on the floor. The second is that any member of that committee next year could bring an item like this back forward for discussion and provide guidance to staff. Through that discussion for consideration in the two thousand twenty seven budget creation.
Thank you. And um Madam Clerk, can I just confirm then if this motion passes the way it is in terms of reconsideration? Uh uh the joint committee would be free to go ahead and continue the discussion, learn more about it. And present, ask that something be considered in twenty twenty seven without restriction? Okay, could you just confirm that um with the mic?
If council does decide to remove this item from the twenty twenty six budget. Um and the matter went to joint municipal services committee, that committee could discuss the item um further and bring a suggestion back for. Um council to consider in the future. We may have to handle it a certain way at the time, but to initiate those discussions, there's no issue.
Okay, thank you. Um and to councillor Dobrine then. Uh okay, uh we just heard from councillor McQueen, so if I could just, I I'll make sure I circle back to any second comments.
Thank you. And through you, I'm all for finding a way to better connect with residents officially. Uh we have tried in Southgate Bang the Table, no success. We have just recently done an engagement about our forecasting and budgeting tools. We had ninety people respond, which is actually better than we've ever had. And um we use Survey Monkey. Um there are platforms out there. My understanding from a quick search is that Gray Highlands is already using share um social pinpoint. It's called Connect Gray Highlands. And I'd be interested through this discussion to find out what our own municipalities, um what kind of. Improved engagement that has shown. Um we have, we have the opportunity right there. I don't feel that we have enough information to say yes or no. I'd be more interested to to learn more about social pinpoint and how our municipalities can. Get on board and if. If our, if they're engaging with Gray County and they find out that, oh, I can comment on this in Southgate or Gray Highlands. Or they may become more engaged. Um so, thank you. I am, I'm intrigued by it. Because I've been approached by iMatter as well, so I I want, I want all the information. I'd rather see it. Held as a placeholder holder for now, or at least get some more information.
Okay, so, okay, hold on, too many side conversations going on here. So, okay. Um so I do have, there is councillor Carlton, there is councillor McQueen. Um it we, Madam Clerk, if if there's a a will to postpone the decision to defer. We would need a motion to defer, or can we just table it until our round two, which is next Friday?
A recommendation, um since it is on the floor, that it could be deferred until the December twelfth meeting.
Okay, so I'll just leave that thought then, but I wanna take the hands that are already up. So I'm gonna go to councillor McQueen, then I'm gonna go to councillor Carlton. And I'll still ask my question if it's not asked.
Thank you, uh Madam Warden. I guess you don't know what you don't know, but I just Googled it here and there's a number of points here that are on on the, when you Google it. Uh it says, one point, increase public participation, uh making it easy for people to give input and feedback regardless of location or schedule. Another one is uh uh so- social pinpoint is an all-in-one community engagement platform. That empowers organized organizations to connect with their communities right where they are. There's a lot of things on here. So I I I would support it for all this till we can get more information and more background. You know, obviously, it's, there's a connection to uh LinkedIn and social or um. Uh Instagram and and so there's, it seems to be connected to all those platforms. You mentioned that, Rob, that it's connected to those platforms. So I'm just the last minute Google and there's a lot of stuff here, so maybe we need time to get more information.
Okay, thank you. I'm gonna go to councillor Carlton and then put a last call out for hands. Uh we'll go to councillor Carlton next online.
Thank you, Warden. I guess what I'm wondering is it, I agree with what councillor McQueen is saying. That there's younger generation that look to interact differently. I also feel we don't have enough information to really make a decision on this totally. So I'm wondering if we can amend the motion to ask that, will it be removed from twenty twenty six? That it be diff- or referred to that joint committee for more information. And for there perhaps to be a presentation to all of council and to the lower tier municipalities. So that we have that information going forward.
Okay, thank you, couns- councillor Carlton. And Madam Clerk, um it the 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 proposition then is to. Uh move an amendment to to do those items, or is it that we vote on this one? And then if it fails, or sorry, if it succeeds either way, succeeds or fails, there's a separate motion. Would you, would you like that that directive to come as a separate motion or as an amendment to this main motion?
I think in the interest of not losing sight of the motion as part of twenty twenty six budget discussions. Because I think council will need to make a decision on that for twenty twenty six. I would recommend a deferral until December twelfth pending further information. And then perhaps at that time, council can revisit the discussion on whether. Uh goes to joint municipal services and is removed from budget or is just voted down altogether or voted in supportive.
Okay, thank you. Okay, um so the question that I have then, uh manager Hatton, is is when I was looking it up to try to understand. How is this in the parallel universe of social media that's happening with Facebook and all of the other, all of the other platforms? How is it different? What is it doing? Does it actually create efficiency for staff time versus um disperse staff time even further? So it refers to the forty dynamic engagement tools. So I, the question I have for you is just so that we have it clear, um and then I'll look for somebody to move a motion. Um if if there's going to be a motion of referral, I'll have to make sure there's the opportunity for somebody to move that prior to voting on this main motion. I- i- if you could just zero back in on, how is this different than the traditional social media? And and what is that above and beyond that it's allowing us to do? In the context of the other questions that have been asked. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Warden. So the platform itself, it will serve as a hub for specific projects that we want to engage on. So residents would be able to subscribe and participate in those particular ones or any other project that they're interested in doing. It has, like you said, the forty engagement tools. There's a lot more features with those tools than what social media provides. Social media is an okay soundboard for people sharing comments and ideas. For, like I said, you can provide those reactions, but that's really it. There's not a whole lot of substance from the feedback that you get through social media. So this platform would allow us to do more in-depth engagement, really to the level that we want to engage. And we can share that out through the platform to all of the channels where people are. So you make an engagement page for something like road exchanges. And then with the clicks of a button, you can make it promote the engagement on LinkedIn, on the county LinkedIn. You can promote it on the county Facebook, on the county Instagram page, the other places where people are, but then they come into the platform to use those more robust tools to give us the information.
Okay, so with that example, something like the reference that they have to interactive maps. If there's a topic about a road exchange and somebody's interested because it sounds like it's in their neck of the woods, they could then go to this platform, click on an interactive map, for example, learn more about it, provide feedback and comments right there. Is that the idea?
Yes, and with the mapping example too, if it was something like we had input our road projects for the year and we just wanted to inform the public about where they were, and if a resident was concerned about their something specific along the line, they could also drop a pin in so that when that feedback comes to us, we know specifically this is the location where they're stating that they've seen concerns about the ditch overflowing or whatever it would be. There's a lot of those spatial benefits from the mapping tools as well.
Okay, so that's just an example. Thank you. So we are on the discussion of the main motion, which is about which is about removing it from the 2026 budget. So at this point in time, we're still in discussion of that. This will be the opportunity if somebody wishes to move a motion to defer to our next committee, the whole meeting, December 12th. Okay, Counselor McQueen, do you want to just name what it is that you're moving?
I will make the motion to defer to our next budget meeting.
Okay. Okay, so Counselor McQueen is moving that the motion be referred, be deferred to the December 12th 2025 pending further information on Social Pinpoint being presented. Preferred path. Okay, all right. So it's been seconded by Counselor Dobrine, so that is now on the floor for discussion. The discussion item is simply stopping the discussion here on the main motion. Waiting until next week when we reconvene. Hopefully with further information being presented as well as the opportunity to explore back home. So is there any discussion on deferring that by one week? Counselor Nielsen?
Just a quick comment saying, I mean, you can check out Connect Grayhounds.ca to see how the platform itself works and what available information is there. It's a pretty quick Google search to, if you want to see a test for yourself.
Okay, great. Any other discussion on deferring it by one week? Okay, then I'll call the question. All those in favor of deferring to December 12th? Okay, I'm gonna need to do a count of hands here. Okay, so Madam Clerk, that motion is carried. Okay, so we will then pick up this discussion in a week's time. Thank you. Thank you very much, Manager Hatton. Okay, so Director Spicer, this is your opportunity with the final slide to wrap up and talk about what we're going to be doing. We already know one thing we're going to do in on December 12th. But I do wish to ask a question just to circle back to just hold on, I've got lots of conversations going on in the room. Okay. Right, Madam Clerk, are we good for process to continue? Okay, thank you. All right, so I do want to circle back to what is new information for us to contemplate, which has a significant reduction difference in the levy, and that is the strategy about the debenture that you described. Because it looks like an excellent opportunity to be able to save one percent or more change in that, one plus percent off of our of our 2026 budget and the levy implication. The question is, is why didn't we do that before in previous years and why are we in a position now to consider it and and for it to be able to make a good decision now as well as in the future years? So if you could just again, share the information that you have shared with us, but in that that question that either people here at the Horseshoe or people in our communities might maybe asking. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Warden. It's a great question. So we have the three debentures, and as I mentioned, they all mature in 2030 or 2031. And the plan at the time that the self-financed debentures were issued was for example, for paramedic services in the Chasworth Base, that debenture would fall off and it would be available, that levy amount of sixty-five thousand four hundred would be available for paramedic services capital. And for Gray Gables, the seventy-three thousand two hundred. Again, we are aware that the Gray Gables Reserve was insufficient. When that debenture payment was finished, it would just continue to reside in Gray Gables levy and it would go toward their future capital needs. And the administration building, seven hundred and six thousand five hundred dollars. When that was paid off, we were, the plan was we would transfer that levy contribution to the Housing Department. So it's not that there hasn't been a plan for the funds. What we're looking at right now is you have significant pressures on the budget and more from the operating side and to a small extent for asset management planning, but as a means to reduce this budget without impacting levels of service, we would remove those from the budget and then we would look in the future at the capital needs and work on adjusting the reserve balances. And we could do some work between reserves perhaps and whether it's, you know, going between reserves or collapsing reserves. But thought that this was a way to offer you an opportunity that we could reduce the levy contribution.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. And just as you're about to conclude your section, I'll just put a last call out for any general questions to Director Spicer. We'll go to Counselor Boddy.
I have a series of questions here. Right now in 2025, do we have an estimate of what our deficit or surplus is going to be for this year?
Through you, Madam Warden. Yes, we do. So it was presented to Budget and Finance Committee at the November 26th meeting and we were sitting around three hundred thousand, give or take a few thousand. So it's very close. There were some departments, obviously, the significant pressure has been winter and snow removal budgets being over and in some departments, they tried to scale back what they could to reduce the impact on the 2025 budget.
Thank you. So I note, 2024, four point four million dollar surplus, so about six percent of the levy. Twenty twenty-three, one point eight million or about two point three five percent of the levy. Two thousand and twenty-two, one point six million surplus, approximately two point four five percent of the levy. Those are big numbers. And of course, we're budgeting this year based on last year's budget, not last year's actuals, and we do that each year. Is there an explanation or how do we, how do we get such big surpluses? Two hundred thousand isn't a big surplus, but we had a wicked winter last year that we may or may not have. Just trying to figure out how we got to that. And if we're starting with a base amount that we're putting five point something on, it is too high right from the start. My thinking is that we should be able to identify why we're over budget. Sorry, under budget, why we have such great surpluses each year. Identify what that area is and budget like one percent less this year in that area. And if I miss, we've still got, even if we get down to the target amount on the on the one-time funding, we've still got money there to account if we miss. It just seems to me that we're, we've overtaxed the last number of years. And we've got a chance to make a correction of that. I'm not talking about dipping into reserves to pay off things. I'm talking about adjusting that budget so that it's appropriate to what we're actually spending. And identifying the area that we are overspending. Do we have an explanation of where we're over budgeting and raising those surpluses?
Through you. I'll speak to 2024. Twenty twenty-four was a unique year. In, with the over four million dollars in surplus, a vast chunk of that was from long-term care. So we received direct care staffing funding. And we were receiving about twelve hundred and twelve dollars per resident per bed in 2023. In 2024, they told us it would go to a range of just over thirteen hundred dollars a bed to just over seventeen hundred dollars a bed. With no formula or mechanism to determine how that would be calculated. I recommended that we go with the low end, which was just over thirteen hundred. Because what was going to happen, if if it, if we budgeted fifteen hundred and it came in at thirteen hundred, we had an in-year deficit and we had a future budget year deficit for 2025 to start off the hopper. What happened was, I would call it unprecedented. The ministry gave over eighteen hundred dollars per bed for this year, starting in April. And again, with no calculation. So being the service delivery partner of the province and we're at the whim of when they release what our funding will be, that's how that chunk of long-term care surplus happened. With the other years, one of the things that we've discussed with Budget and Finance is a number of departments, and this isn't by far everything. But we've, sometimes we have staffing challenges. So in my own department, we have been unable to fill mat leaves. Then you have someone leave. There's a period of time between when they leave and when you can recruit. And during COVID, we received more funding for various things. We're still sitting with, it's subject to year end, we're still sitting with a wee bit of money for safe restart funding that offsets some costs. And I will speak to, we're not just taking last year's budget and adding a percentage. We're asking staff to be mindful of what goes into a budget number and that we've been doing with Questica. So if you, in my own department, staff training, here's how much per person, here's what we're thinking of doing, et cetera. And then in say, for example, housing, we might have had some surplus because capital projects came in more favorable than estimated. So yes, those have gone to what we brought to committee as a reserve transfers with our surplus, once we knew what our surplus was. I will say we are very mindful of when you use surplus. So if we have a dedicated reserve contribution, we put it to reserve for a purpose and we ask that it not be withdrawn for something other than the purpose. So if I was putting money away in paramedic services to buy ambulances, well, we're not going out and buying track unit that can go down hills that I've seen in other areas, for example. I can't think of the right word. And then we've also put the surplus away to the one-time funding reserve where it's appropriate, and that's most often corporate services surplus. And we use that for other things that will be non-recurring needs. And Sue's slides poke to that. When I get to the finance budget, you'll see in the capital, we are proposing we use some of that money when we have to use to replace our accounting software, Great Plains, which is nearing end of life. I hope that helps to explain.
Okay, thank you. Follow up, Counselor Boddy?
Thank you. By no means did I mean to suggest that staff aren't trying to to control budgets or that they are spending surpluses on anything that they shouldn't spend on. That's not my indication or my thoughts at all. But when we come here, we're looking at a five percent increase based on last year's budget, and I still see that there's an amount of surplus. Yes, we put money into surplus. Yes, we put that into capital or into spending in the right area. But it's not really being honest with our taxpayers if we are putting money into surplus and we're counting on that in the end of the year to spend it down the road when that wasn't what we budgeted for. We budgeted for the operations to be spent in this given year. I mean, it's always better to have a surplus than a deficit. My dartboard theory, it's always closer to be dead center on what you're budgeting for and aim for the goal, not surplus or deficit going wider. But I just keep looking at this going, you know, a one percent decrease on the budget this year, taking in what we've done with surpluses the last couple of years. I just think there's got to be a way of getting tighter to that, to that dartboard, to that center. I'm frankly hoping that staff have ideas before we get back here next week of how to get us under five percent. And I think that surplus annually somehow needs to be looked at. Thank you.
Through you, Warden, and thank you for those comments. I think with the rollout of the Questica software that we're using more frequently now this year, I think there's opportunities for us to be able to get some more insights. We'll use the word data because we used that previously. But there definitely be more opportunity for us to get down to a more granular level than what we've ever had before. And so I think there's opportunities there for us to refine some of those numbers as we go using that budget tool. And, and my hope is then we can get a bit closer to that bullseye, so to speak. In saying that, you know, a lot of our budgets are based on a lot of assumptions, whether it's provincial funding, federal funding. We don't merely provide the example of the one year why the 2024 surplus was so high. We do our best based on the information we have at the time when we're drafting the budgets. And some things change. And sometimes we find that out even later in the year, the following year, in terms of actual funding amount. So it is, it's a bit of a challenge. But I think I'm hopeful that through some of the budgeting tools that we'll be able to get closer to that bullseye.
Okay, thank you. Any other final questions for Director Spicer at this point in our agenda? Okay, not seeing any hands here in the room and nothing online. Nope, okay, great. Well, thank you again. We do appreciate looking at every single avenue that is possible for this context of this particular year and also making sure that we are learning from what we've done in the past and that we're not shortchanging decisions that will need to be made in the future by focusing too far into this particular year on its own. It's good to see it, the continuity of the year. So good questions, good discussion. There's one more item that's going to happen. Thank you very much, Director Spicer. There is one more activity that is going to happen before we break for lunch. So I can just give a heads up to the transportation crowd that's in the room there. We're not going to be seeing you until after lunch. So just to give you that heads up. We'll come back with fresher minds and ready to take in your whole presentation, which is longer than other items. So with that, we are going to take five minutes with Manager Garrett Reed is going to provide us with a bit of a five-minute demonstration of open book for council, but also for those following along in the communities. Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. This is our new public-facing budget book.
This is our new public-facing budget book. We're able to do a lot of different things with it and present information in a lot of different ways. This site, graycountyopenbook.questica.com is unique to Gray County and it's pulling information directly from Questica, our budgeting software. We have used it for budget and finance for the previous meetings as well as providing them with capital updates. So it's not just for budget documents. We can provide other financial reports through Questica as well, as opposed to giving you PDFs of financial data. You can get them in different charts or data sets. So the cards we've given you for the 2026 budget deliberations, the first two, I'm not going to go into, but they're the Gray County Assessment and the Reserve's Debt and Financial Position. These are information that previously we've had at the front of our budget book in the past. Useful information, but but in the sake of my five-minute timeline, I'm not going to go into them. The next one is our Capital Budget Explorer. And I want to thank Matt Warpman, Gordon Slater, and Sean Potter for their work on getting this data in here. This is an interactive map that shows our capital projects. As of right now, it is only our transportation projects that are included within here as there's some limitations within the system about putting multiple projects on one specific location. So if I was doing a, all 20 projects that are budgeted at this building over the next 10 years, you would only see the top point because they would be exactly stacked on top of each other. But if a resident, I have an uncle who lives on Gray Road 18. If he is curious about when his road might get paved, he could scroll down to his road on the map. He lives about right here. Click on the the purple line, which shows there's a capital project there. He'll get the the description and the justification for the project, as well as when the project is expected, and then pie chart detailing the the funding sources. So the projects that aren't within transportation are still included. If you were to look for a project that's not sorry, most wire was hitting there. If you're looking for a project that's not in transportation, you would go up to this top search bar up here and search for whatever you were looking for. You can also filter by department if you're only looking at specific projects. So right now I have everything selected, but if I just wanted to look at paramedic services projects, I would click here and it would give me a list of all of my capital projects and paramedic services and present the data in the same form that Matt. The, and then once you go into a card, if you're looking to go back out, you just click on this little Gray County logo up here and it'll bring you back to the main page. The other tools are explorers. I will go into the Capital Budget Explorer, which is just a different way to present financial information to to council and our residents. So if I'm looking at our capital budget, gross expenditures for 2026 are $115 million. But what does that mean? That it gives a pie chart of what departments or where those expenses live. Not surprising, the majority lives within human services, as this includes the Rockwood redevelopment project. But since transportation's going up first, I will drill down into them and their $47.6 million of capital projects. That is split out 8.3 million for facilities, which includes Patrol D, 3.7 for machinery, and 35 million for for major roads construction. And if I want to drill down even further, I would click on that one more time, and it'll give me a breakdown of the projects that make up those gross expenditures. And we've done that for operating budgets as well as capital budgets. So there's two separate explorers. Then we have our capital budget. Oops, I clicked into the wrong one. Then we have our 10-year capital plan. This replaces the the PDF that you had last year that was in excess of thousands of pages. And it's broken out by department. It provides a summary for each department as far as actual GL accounts that the expenditures are going to. And then a list of all of the projects over the next 10 years by gross expenditure. But if you wanted to pick any one of these projects, let's go to CAO 01, when we're doing our building assessment, I would just have to go down and click on the next tab, and it would provide me with the description, justification, and the actual revenue sources and expenditures for that project. Last one is the actual draft budget. We've done our best to try to set this up similar to the previous budget book that that you guys have seen in the past. At the beginning, we have some qualitative information as well as the the details around total budget numbers, summaries by departments. New this year, we've also added in tabs for the new staffing requests that were proposed at the September BFC, as well as level of service changes, which this year is Rockwood Terrace and Sue's already touched on. Then we get into our department-by-department summary. Again, since transportation's going first, I will go down to them. We have a cover page that provides the brief overview of the department and where they're sitting. And then each sub-department within that that category has their own budget documents. So if I look at machinery and facilities, I have my narrative here. Then I will have my, what was previously done with FRX, our financial statements. Then I'll have my financial statement for capital. And then I will have another listing of all of my my gross expenditures for my capital projects over the next 10 years. Previously, in the budget book, you would have went for human services, for example, all of the narrative for social services, then long-term care, then housing, then then paramedics. And then you would have had approximately 100 pages of financial statements that tie to those, that narrative that was up above. In this, it's now meant to read more like a book where you see the the narrative for that specific department, and then the financials follow right after it. Acknowledging I've gone through this very fast and the non-budget and finance committee members, this is their first time seeing it. If there's ever any questions about maneuvering or functionalities within the open book, feel free to reach out to myself, Sue, or Mary Lou at any time. Thank you.
Excellent. This has been a fantastic tool to to explore as our budget committee has been starting to see the bits and pieces come together. It is so accessible for members of the community as well. It's wonderful. Thank you. So with that, then, questions from any members in terms of that demo? And of course, you can feel free to ask individual questions to staff later if you think of it, once you have a chance to play with it. But we wanted to make sure that the whole of the committee, the whole had a chance to see it and see it in action as we have at the Budget Committee. Okay, I don't see any hands here in person nor online. Okay, so it looks like we are good. Thank you very much for that. And that will definitely fuel our discussion and our conversations to be able to drill down as far as you need to define the information that you're looking for. All right. So with that, then, we are going to break for lunch. And so if we could come back then at 1:30, we will be continuing with the presentations and we will be getting, we will be beginning with transportation services, operating, and capital. So with that, we are adjourned until 1:30. Thank you.
Okay, welcome back Committee of the Whole Members. We are ready to continue with our agenda today discussing budget. But to begin with, what we're going to do is I'm going to ask CEO Schertzler to come up and do a recap of everything that we've discussed in terms of the generalities from this morning before we go into the actual individual department. Presentation. So I suggest CA Schertzler at this point in time that you provide us with an overview. We digest it for information purposes because it's nothing new. It's just simply telling us where we are, where we would land if we go ahead with the things that we've discussed today.
Thank you, Warden, and good afternoon, Council. So as the Warden indicated, we want to do a bit of a recap based on what we discussed this morning in terms of the staff recommendations to potentially look at further budget reduction opportunities. As well as the motion that was passed previously by by Council with respect to using. When we came in a closed session. So just capture on the slides there, you can see in the screen. The forestry revenue, again, our tenders came in higher than what we anticipated as per the current draft budget. So that results in a point zero two percent reduction if we were to capture what we've actually will get in terms of forestry revenue. The debenture payment, so this would be paying off our self debentures using one-time funding. There was there was those three projects that were currently self debenturing. That would result in 1.05% reduction in 2026. The one-time funding reserve for primary services that motion was passed earlier, that results in a point two eight percent reduction on the net levy. Social pinpoint, although that was deferred until the next meeting, again, the staff recommendation was to fund from reserve. Or. One option may be to remove that entirely. Either way, that would result in a point zero four percent reduction. So the total then with respect to that would be an overall. Net levy decrease in 2026 based on if all those recommendations were supported at some point by Council. A total of just over 1.1 million reduction, which results in a 1.39% decrease. So again, based on the current draft budget where we're currently we're sitting before we started today, we were at 6.68%. If all those recommendations were put into were approved by Council, we'd be looking at 5.29% currently. As you can see on the from a 2027, we'd be at 6.56% again with those. Staff recommendations were supported by Council at some point. Any questions before I go into? A couple of options that again staff discussed over the lunch period. That because we were hearing some comments about interest maybe going below 5%. There's a couple of options that staff discussed over the lunch period that were also discussed. And mentioned at the Budget and Finance Committee meeting that we've we would like to show this. As well to Council before Transportation Services starts their budget presentation.
Sorry, CEO Schertzler, why don't you go ahead and move into the new information because we have that is just a recap. So there shouldn't be a lot of questions. People may have a question. Once you introduce new information that could stir a new question.
Thank you, Warden, through you. So go into the next slide then. Thanks, Brittany. So. One other potential option you'll see that identified just under the social pinpoint. Would be to phase in the the cost for the road exchange. So as noted earlier, right now in the draft budget, we have 1.24 million that's identified in the 2026 budget. That's one of the main budget drivers that's driving up. That increase that percent increase. One option is to split the phase that increase in. So the option you see on the screen there would be. 75% funded by levy in 2026, 25% one-time funding reserve. And the balance would then be picked up in 2027. So you'd be potentially deferring those some of those costs. Into 2027. So as you can see, that results in a decrease. In 2026 from what we were currently at before with if those staff recommendations were supported, which was at the 5.29, if you remember from the previous slide. That would get it down to 4.9% in 2026. But as you can see on the flip side, it increases it to 6.95% in 2027. So that's the challenge of of potentially phasing in that is that it reduces it in 2026, but we see an increase on the flip side in 2027. If you go to the next slide. It just further illustrates what another phase in option would be for road exchange. So if it was 50% funded by levy. In 2026 and 50% one-time funding reserve in 2026. That results in a point 77% reduction 2026. Again, with all the other potential opportunities to reduce the budget. You'd be at 4.51%, but as you can see, that increases it even further on 2027, we'd be projected at 7.34%. So again, we just wanted to present those because we discussed those during the lunch break. As potential options for consideration, we were hearing from. Some of the counselors during that morning discussion that there's interest to look at below 5%. We just wanted to present that as one potential option if that's what Council will be looking to to try to achieve. We'd be happy to take any questions with respect to that. Before we get into the Transportation Services Department budget.
Okay, so now let's put it out for any questions. We'll start with Counselor McQueen.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Madam Warden. What is of the original budget of? 5.3 or whatever that was, 31 is proportioned to the road exchange of that big part.
Through you, Warden, I'll turn it over to Mary Lou.
Thank you, Randy. So in the 2026 budget, it includes 1,240,000. So when you see the the slide that is on the screen right now. At the the road exchange 50% being funded from levy, 15 from one-time funding of 620,000. That's half the 1.24 million. And then if you went to the previous slide and you were funding 25% of it. Again, we're still using that number. So that 1,240,000.
I'll just try to answer that and then we pull Transportation Services or some others to help answer with respect to that. So right now, although Trans勤 Services have done a rough estimate of what those upgrades will be. Those upgrades and will be over a. A long time period, at least 20 years, I think, is in terms of the the current projected. We have not integrated that as part of the asset manager percent increases. That's just our current assets as exists today. And that's to play catch up based on. What we need in terms of in order to maintain those assets based on our current asset management plan. At some point, if the road transfers fully proceeds, we would be bringing in further information. We would have to collect further information data from. From what actual those upgrades are required to be and then update our asset management plan accordingly.
Okay, thank you. Not seeing any further hands up, and that was just a check-in point anyway, but you've introduced new new options for us to consider. So thank you for introducing those as early as possible. And with that, then we are on the topic of transportation. So I'll invite Director Hoy to come on up. And Director Hoy, I understand you're going to do an overview and then jump into the specifics of supervision before handing it over to the rest of your team. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we're starting on page 376. That has the Transportation Services summary. So just to give you a quick overview of what I'm doing, there's. Transportation is three divisions. So it's administration, operating like operations and basically called engineering. So. The engineering, you know, is mostly capital-based. Operations is all your winter maintenance or maintenance, I guess, all winter maintenance, summer maintenance. And then and then the administration staff. So I'll be going over the administration budget. But I wanted to send a thank you out. All the staff is here that worked so hard on these budgets, and I wanted to just thank everyone for all the work they've done. And I wanted to especially thank Garrett because he's been. Doing double or triple duty as our financial analyst, even though that's not really his job. He did say we're his favorite department to work with. I'm sure he said that, but. Anyway, but he's he's gone above and beyond on a regular basis. With us. So. On 376, there's just a summary there outlining. The 3.5 million dollar increase in Transportation Services budget. So about 2.6 million of that is the asset management and the road exchange. So that is the largest component. There's other increases too. That the other staff is going to go over here, but. We're just. Yeah, so in that road exchange, who knows if it's not 1.24 after what Randy just showed, it could be a different number, right? So on to page 377. So this is this is basically, I would call it kind of our mini budget. So. Different managers are responsible for different budgets, and these are kind of there's a little write-up on everyone on what kind of they entail. There's some crossover of activities. But it is it is complicated between capital and equipment and machinery. All our supplies, salt, that type of thing. It is spread across a number of budgets. So on to. Page 378, I will be looking at the the administration budget, which is supervision, overhead and administration. So that is on page. It's in the middle of the thing here, which is kind of weird, but. It's on page 402. So it it represents a decrease of 4,000. I guess that's why I picked to talk about that one because it's one that goes down. So it's a decrease of 4,000. There's increases in insurance. There's increasing revenue. The revenue has been really good this year as far as some of our permits. We are very careful to try to. You're not sure exactly why permit revenue is up. I think I think some of the fiber installations have helped with our road encroachment permits. There's been a lot of people doing work on our roadways more than normal, as you see. And so. And then we have all our permits have gone online too. So there is a lot of uptake in the online permitting as far as the. Oversized loads and those types of things. We have a couple. Prefab home manufacturers in the area that do get a lot of oversized permits. The professional fees. We feel like we get very good value out of our engineering team does most of our work internally. If it's a big. Capital job with say with municipality with a lot of water main design and those types of things where they're kind of infrastructure based in the underground. That's where a lot of our professional fees go. As far as our internal kind of highway projects, we do pretty much all our tendering and administration ourselves. And then there's still a carryover budget in there, which comes out of development charges, which is a regional transportation assessment, which was in last year's budget, but it hasn't happened yet. We haven't quite got MTO on board yet. With maybe doing a regional transportation plan for the Georgian Triangle. So Simco was on board and ourselves. MTO, we might be. Maybe have them half on board, maybe one region might want to do it more than another, but that's still in there as a DC charge right now. So it doesn't really affect the levy. And the next two pages. I guess that's two, 403 and 404. Oh, next four pages, I guess, are just a summary of the. Of all the accounts that go roll up to make that budget. So I don't know if anyone had any questions on those pages. If there's any numbers in there that anybody sees, but I think I think the kind of the increases or decreases were summarized basically just under the initial write-up.
Okay, so with that, then. We're. Let's say we're going to start with Counselor Mackey and if somebody could keep letting me know about online as well. Okay, Counselor Mackey.
Thank you, Warden Matrasoff. Just wondering, is there any opportunity, Pat, for any increased revenue? We haven't talked much about revenue generation in any departments, but you mentioned it here today. But there's been good revenue and you gave a couple of examples. Are there opportunities to increase revenues in your departments?
Through you, Warden. I would we look at this pretty regularly when the fees and services bylaw comes out. The kind of the 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 encroachment permit that we have, and it was brought in, I don't know, maybe 2014 or so. We seem to charge a lot more than some other people maybe. But, you know, it's it is a lot of work. It is cost recovery on our part because. All of a sudden, if you're putting a fiber line in for, you know, 15 kilometers. We have to go over the plans. We meet with them on site. There's always exceptions that are, you know, whether it's. A bunch of trees that a provider doesn't want to take down or boulders or. So it is a lot of work. We try not to overcharge people. I think we're. We've looked at other departments too when they went online, just to see before we started doing all the online. And we're generally in line with others. So like. Some are higher than others and lower than others, but I think I think around average, we're not, I don't think we're overcharging and we're not really undercharging either. Like I don't think it's a. Necessarily a hindrance to a lot of people to do the work. It seems like there's still lots of people wanting to work.
Okay, looking around the room for any other hands. We nothing online. All right. Onward.
Yes, so now we're going to have Sean Anthony come up and start going over various budgets that he is responsible for. Oh, and I just screwed something up on the screen.
Okay, good afternoon, everybody. Through the Warden. I'll be covering the following budgets, facilities, depots, domes. Both operating and capital machinery and equipment, operating and capital, winter maintenance, which is. An operating fund and ordinary maintenance, which is also an operating fund. So starting with facilities, depots and domes. Operating capital budgets total 720,900 increase of 882,800 compared to 2025. The operating portion of this budget has a net levy requirement of 323,000 and increase of 71,600. This increase is primarily the result of increased repair costs for that should read sand storage buildings. Including Clarksburg to ensure that ensure that these buildings are safe and usable until their planned replacements. So for example, last winter was particularly hard on these sand structures. And third-party engineering inspections revealed structural damage to the tune of around 90,000. Combined across Ayton, Dundalk and Clarksburg. As well, there's additional increases in there for increasing utility costs and usage of equipment. The capital portion of this budget has a net requirement of. 397,700 and increase of 11,200 from 2025. Capital projects are funded from Zerve. A transfer to reserve is budgeted on future work as recommended in the 2020 building condition assessments. So projects scheduled for 2026 include. And Chatsworth removal of asbestos. Electrical, water and septic repairs identified through the BCA's, the building condition assessments. And infraradian heaters. In Clarksburg, we have to do some floor drains just to make sure that we don't have water pooling on the shop floor. In Kimberly, we have a winter dome contingency, and that's for the trucking of. Sand from our Aggermont sand facility to Clarksburg in the event of the untimely. Demise of our fabric Kimberly dome structure, which I've discussed at previous meetings. A new Patrol D facility funded by transfer from Zerves. So that would be our new Sea Lawn depot. Uh, a new patrol D facility funded by transfer firm reserves. Uh, so that would be our new, uh, seal on, uh, depot. Uh, electrical vehicle chargers at various locations, uh, fifty percent funded through grant funding, uh, miscellaneous depot repairs and transfers to reserves. So if it's appropriate, I'll probably just pause there for questions before moving on to machinery.
Okay. Yes. Let's break your section down. So any questions on that specific section? We'll go to Council McQueen.
So you just talked about seal on, seal on property. So it's a, in a holding pattern until you need to move forward? Right.
Yep. To Councilor McQueen, um, so we purchased property in twenty twenty five as well as done a lot of the background work for, um, that upcoming project. Uh, so that's included, uh, geotech, uh, archaeological assessments. Getting some conceptual engineering drawings done so that we're prepared, um, for, uh, an eventual RFP in very early twenty twenty six. Um, we're looking like we'll be doing a pre qualification of our, um, design build teams just before Christmas here, and then we should have an RFP out early in January for that build.
The only reason I asked is I know we've had the current site for quite a long time. And I wasn't sure if you were going to pull the trigger until, and I know there's probably a timeframe that you gotta, you only have, but I, I know, was there any indication that they're, they're removing from that site? That's all. Just in the sense of the cost, you have that property, you hold it, you got it, you know, you're good. But if you're, if they're still okay for you to stay there, or is the point is, is to build a site and then just move it?
Sorry, I, I'm just a little unclear. We, we purchased the, um, the seal on property in, in twenty twenty five and we'll.
So the current site is the old MTO, the, the MTO site in Fleisherton that we've been using for, I don't sure how long. And my question is, is if we're allowed to stay there, do we need to spend, I, I can see us being ready and prepared. Do we need to spend the money if, if we're still good to stay there? That, that was my question until that time and we get to boot.
Um, yeah. So that was kind of identified in when we, when we first got approval to move forward with the, a new patrol D facility, um, back in, I think, twenty seventeen. There is a report that was taken to council identifying some of the risks of, of trying to, or being, um, a renter essentially at that Fleisherton facility. Part of that is not knowing the plans of the administrative transportation long term and what their contractor plans are going to be and, um, whether there will always be room for us there. So at that time, council felt that it would be prudent for us to start looking for, uh, a facility where we could, um, live essentially long term.
Okay. We'll do a final follow up from, uh, Council McQueen.
So my only point is, I don't know what we cost us to rent it or whatever. I, I guess my point is, if, if, if we're okay to stay there, and I guess you don't have much indication, do we need to go and spend all that money if we're there? It's good to have as a backup plan that we, we're good. We got that. I know it's been taking time to find a location. But my point is, is because, because it's convenient, it's on freeway four, it's in central spot. That was the only way I was asking a question. If, if we're not getting pushed out, we're, we got it. We're good. Now we have a property. Do we need to spend the money to build a new depot if we're still good to be there? That was my point until that time. That's all.
I see. And, and just for clarification, the cost, it, we only paid for maintenance there and then a, a nominal fee for annual rent. Yeah.
Okay. I am not seeing any further hands up here in the room or online. So we are ready to carry on with your next section. Thank you.
Okay. I'll proceed with, uh, machinery, um, operation and equipment operations. It's probably a good point to go through, uh, before getting started on that. Just makes sense to provide a summary of the FTE, um, request for a new mechanic as well. So um, just a quick summary of the business case that we submitted. Um, so Gray, Gray County's transportation services is facing increased workload pressures due to growing contract demands, a larger fleet, including twenty three tandems, thirty pickup trucks, twenty six, uh, pieces of heavy equipment. Um, twenty eight growing to thirty EMS vehicles requiring, uh, frequent inspections. Um, the current team of one fleet supervisor, two shop supervisors, three mechanics and one apprentice also services, uh, Bright Shores patient transfer vehicles. Um, a total of six. Um, this equates to roughly nineteen vehicles per staff member. Um, and growing, leading to employee burnout, longer response times, reduced preventative maintenance and increased overtime costs. So specifically the challenges that we're having are a shift from preventative to reactive maintenance, uh, raising repair costs, uh, delays in service and compliance risk for provincial, uh, regulations. High loss time, uh, on average eleven point eight weeks per mechanic annually due to all reasons, um, illness, vacation, lieu, leaves, um, training, so forth. Uh, and an aging workforce, uh, and just looking at that from the lens of succession planning. So our proposed solution would be to hire one additional full-time mechanic, uh, to improve our preventative maintenance and reduce costly repairs, enhance the service quality and compliance, especially for our EMS vehicles. Uh, reduce, uh, individual overtime and distribute that workload more evenly and provide a local service in Southern Gray County at the Aitken Depot and eventually the seal on depot, um, cutting transport time and cost. So the benefits of an additional mechanic would be increased efficiency and reduced downtime, uh, cost savings through fewer emergency repairs and improved, uh, scheduling, uh, better regulatory compliance with provincial standards for ambulances and commercial vehicles. And improved morale resulting from, uh, reduced burnout. In terms of costs, we estimate, or we, we know what a mechanic will cost roughly a hundred twenty thousand. So if you conservatively estimate thirty six weeks of, uh, productive time per year, so that's after all sources of, of leave, vacations, et cetera, et cetera. Multiply that by what it would cost to, uh, uh, at a third party shop at a very conservative a hundred and ten dollar per hour, uh, shop rate. We still see savings of almost forty thousand, uh, compared to, to sending that work out of, out of our shop. So, that's kind of the, uh, business case for the mechanic. I'll continue with machinery and equipment, um, narrative here just because it, it sort of speaks to that as well, but um, take questions on that after the machinery or equipment budget. So, uh, the twenty twenty six machinery and equipment budget and capital budgets total three hundred sixty eight thousand seven hundred, an increase of a hundred and sixty one thousand nine hundred compared to twenty twenty five. All levy for this, uh, department is within the operating budget, which includes Gray County mechanics and the annual transfer, um, to equipment preserve. To main, maintain an adequate balance in the equipment reserve, there's a transfer of one million two hundred seventy seven thousand nine hundred, an increase of ninety eight thousand eight hundred compared to twenty twenty five. The increase is a result of increased equipment prices, additional vehicles being added to the fleet and the eventual conversion to a fully electric fleet. Um, additionally, this budget is increased, has increased as there's a proposal for an additional mechanic, as I mentioned, to be added in twenty twenty six, which accounts for the majority of that increase. On the capital side, equipment purchases of three million six hundred ninety two thousand two hundred are budgeted, of which one million four hundred eighty two thousand one hundred is for equipment that is to be tendered in twenty twenty six. Eight hundred twenty four thousand was tendered already tendered in twenty twenty three. Uh, four hundred twenty eight thousand was tendered in twenty twenty four and nine hundred fifty seven thousand was tendered in twenty twenty five. So again, we're still seeing, uh, supply chain, uh, delays on the, uh, tandem dump, dump truck, snow plow side of things. Uh, the current fleet consists of thirty three vehicles and fifty pieces of equipment with a replacement value of roughly twenty million. The purchase of electric vehicles will be phased in with the purchase of four electric cap tons in twenty twenty six, two of which have already been, have been carried over from twenty twenty five as staff were waiting for charger installation before, uh, ordering. Um, the planned, uh, new equipment purchases are based on the twenty twenty six to twenty twenty, twenty thirty five, ten year capital forecast with the following expenditures for twenty twenty six. So as I mentioned, two tandem trucks that were carryover from twenty twenty three, one from twenty twenty four, two from this year, twenty twenty five, a gas half ton, uh, electric half tons to those, those two I can confirm have already been ordered, one of which has been received and one will be received in Q one twenty twenty six. Uh, the two electric half tons that would represent the twenty twenty six replacements. Um, a two gas one tons. Um, a greater, the social services ban. So we receive an annual transfer and order that vehicle on their behalf. Uh, the equipment and innovation and attachments budget of sixty six thousand three hundred, which covers things like weather cameras, um, backup cameras, vehicle telematics, that sort of thing. Um, and non licensed equipment, which covers things like, uh, road closed trailers, generators, high tension cable barrier, uh, tools and supplies, pumps, et cetera. So perhaps I'll pause there before moving on to ordinary maintenance.
Okay. Any questions on this section? Council Greg.
Sorry. And if I'm, uh, if my conversation is better placed, uh, with, uh, a more fulsome conversation about all the roles, just please feel free to, to, um, uh, direct me at that time, but I am concerned with the eleven point eight weeks of lost time a year. I mean, I think every taxpayer in the county is probably concerned with, with the amount of time that's not spent working on the equipment. And I understand the desire for, uh, compliment and staff for twenty six. There's another compliment asked for for two thousand twenty seven. Before I would ever want to contemplate that, I would want to see a strategy from staff on what we're going to do as a corporation to bring that eleven point eight. I feel right now we're on a trajectory of it's been going always up. And we need to, uh, turn that trajectory around, um, so that we get more productivity, um, through the year, working on our, our machinery. It's, it's a lot of lost time. And with consideration of electric vehicles, perhaps other, um, alternatives in the marketplace, um, for shops. Um, I know in On Sound, I think we have two mechanics, maybe sharing of resources, uh, is something that we could better consider before we just agree to enhancing the complement, um, by two. Um, I think that's just, um, it's a big ask, um, for, for, for the department when there might be other alternatives that we haven't looked at yet.
Okay. We're actually going to call upon, um, uh, Director Moreau to come up and assist with this.
Um, through you, Madam Warden. Uh, the lost time is a mixture of vacation time, and we have senior staff that have been with this department for quite a while. Uh, it will also include statutory holidays. Uh, it will include bereavement and it will include sick days. And if you see it trending up, it is because every single year that our staff stay with us and keep those knowledge, skills and ability within Gray County, it will always rise. Uh, but our vacation schedule, um, sick time, bereavement, statutory holidays are all governed by our collective agreement. Uh, so this is a natural trend that we would see.
Um, and, and just, um, to Council Greg's question, uh, or point about the, um, the two requests, one for twenty twenty six and one for twenty twenty seven. Um, we would be reviewing this, uh, if, if granted the, the opportunity to have an additional mechanic, we would be reviewing through twenty twenty six to make sure that that still makes, makes sense, uh, for twenty twenty seven, um, and be returning to council with rationale and, um, if, if we thought that that was appropriate, but, um, it will be reviewed at some point.
Follow up, Council Greg.
Thank you. And, and I do understand that and I appreciate that. Um, there is at some point, uh, uh, a requirement really though, to do a fulsome evaluation as to, uh, external shop rates in conjunction with what are actual costs then of operating the department and maintaining everything our, through the year. And I understand as the department is, uh, aging and get more seniority, then you do have people ultimately replaced with succession planning and so forth, that do come back in, uh, with, with, uh, lower, um, guarantees in the employment in the collective bargaining agreement and they work with their way back up through. So I understand it's a very senior department right now. Um, but I do think that it's, uh, it can get to be a very big ask and at some point, there may have to be a conversation.
Okay. I see Director Morrow.
Uh, through you, Madam Warden. I did just want to remind everyone that we do have a collective agreement in place that requires us not to contract out work. Whereas we can sometimes through emergency circumstances, or if we don't have the skills and ability within the bargaining unit to complete work. Um, but it is not such that we could contract out work because it is cheaper to us.
Okay. Thank you. And also Director Spicer.
You, Madam Warden. Um, I, I suggested to, uh, Randy that it might be helpful to share a conversation that we had yesterday at our, uh, member treasurer's meeting. Um, the topic came up of, um, succession planning and retention and recruitment of staff. And a number brought up that they were having, I'd say, challenges and wondered about hiring their own techs and who has their own techs. Um, and then the conversation devolved into, you know, it, they're having challenges if they have to send work out to a shop in the timeliness that the work comes back. And one made a comment that, that a vehicle had sat for something like a week. They ended up picking it up and taking it elsewhere. Um, so, you know, I think that also plays into this and I'd say like, having come from the for profit world before I ever came here and, you know, seeing the busyness of shops, that also plays a factor. And some of them weren't even having a conversation about whether there'd be merits in trying to go together to hire staff. And I made the comment that our staffing is at our capacity between looking after the paramedic vehicles, the transportation vehicles, the paramedic stretchers and the bright shores vehicles that we sold to them because they have the power loads and the power stretchers, that we currently don't have capacity for our own. And the other thing that's happened is as you add more vehicles, which, um, Sean has spoken to, but we're also keeping vehicles longer because of the supply chain issues that he's also mentioned. So the, the longer you keep a vehicle past its expected useful life, the more the repairs are and the more it's going in the shop.
Okay. Thank you. There was a question over here from Council Eccles.
So that's been discussed quite a bit through you, Madam Warden. Um, what is our shop rate? What do we charge it?
Uh, so our current shop rate, uh, was increased, uh, in through the last budget cycle from eighty dollars an hour to ninety dollars an hour. And we're proposing to increase it to a hundred ten dollars an hour, um, just based on market review. We'd still be, uh, below average compared to, uh, local shops, uh, but we just feel that would be appropriate.
And I guess, can you give me an explanation again as to why we are contracting work with Bright Shores? There's six vehicles. And, you know, on that idea that we've got too much work and whatnot, this is why we've got to, uh, to be able to have the capacity with our, uh, present mechanics, we're going to have to add to them. And we're taking on work from other organizations. Just for clarity.
So I can, I can speak to the, uh, capacity and, um, the amount of work that we're taking off of Bright Shores, but in terms of the, the background, uh, rationale and all that kind of stuff, I kind of defer to, uh, our CIO or, uh, deputy CIO. But in terms of actual work and billings, um, it equates to less than thirty thousand per year with those six, uh, vehicles.
Okay. Uh, CRO, did you want to add to that?
Through you, Warden. Um, and I think Mary Lou touched on this.
Through you, Warden, um, and I think Barry Lou touched on this in terms of the, um, the mechanics, our mechanics, uh, do, uh, more than just work on the vehicles. Um, and they, they do work on our power stretchers and, and a number of piece of equipment that are part of our, um, our ambulances. And, and I think at the time, when in terms of looking at, um, the use of Bright Shores for, for our, our older vehicles, I'll call them our older ambulances, uh, they, uh, the power stretchers and other things that our mechanics look after, I think they're looking to see if someone would be able to, uh, be able to maintain those as well. Um, so at the time, again, there was, uh, uh, the notion that, um, we could provide that support on a cost recovery basis by, by billing those out. And as, as Sean indicated, we are, uh, we are proposing to increase our shop out rates to ensure that we're maintaining at least, uh, close to market comparison, uh, with respect to what, what those, uh, maintenance, uh, costs from a cost recovery perspective would, would be. So, um, so that's just a bit of a background in terms of, I think, why at the time, um, uh, we, we provided that opportunity, uh, to Bright Shores. Um, I wasn't involved in, in the full details of that, but, uh, that's, that's part of it too. But Director McDav may have some further.
Yes, I believe it was probably five years ago or so that we, uh, we were selling our older fleet vehicles to Bright Shores. And be like, uh, CEO was saying is the, uh, stretchers, oxygen testing, and, and they've already been maintaining these vehicles. It was more of a partnership. Uh, Bright Shores had, uh, had been in the trans, moving into the transfer system when we were able to complete the transfers as timely anymore. And, uh, so they were looking at solutions and, uh, it was at that time, it was a discussion around us, uh, you know, selling us that our old vehicles to them and then being the mechanics be able to maintain them and, and do the quality testing on them.
Okay, thank you. We have a question online. We'll go to Counselor Dickert first and then we'll go to Counselor Mackey.
Thank you, Warden Machusov. Just, uh, you know, as we transition to the electric vehicles and we're led to believe that, uh, maintenance on electric vehicles is somewhat less, what, uh, what considerations?
Hold that thought, uh, Counselor Dickert, we just need to change the technology over so that we can hear you. Try now.
Uh, as we transition to the electric vehicles, uh, just wondering what, uh, thought has been given as to, you know, we're led to believe electric vehicles have less maintenance required. And has that been considered as we look forward? I know we're early in that transition, but, uh, wondering what thoughts been given to that.
Yeah, excellent question. Uh, so just a bit of a quick analysis, um, from the EV perspective, uh, EV half ton perspective. So just, uh, we just recent to EV, uh, half ton pickup trucks, as I mentioned. Um, our gas pickup trucks this year cost fifty eight thousand roughly, uh, or, or EV pickup trucks cost around, uh, seventy nine thousand for comparisons, roughly a twenty thousand dollar, uh, difference in purchase price there. Um, however, when you look at the operating costs, so, um, considering, can, very conservatively again, that, um, the gas for a, a half ton pickup truck based on twenty five thousand kilometers per year would be around, uh, thirty seven, thirty, thirty seven, thirty eight hundred. Uh, whereas the operating for the energy on the EV would be around, uh, eight hundred sixty per year. So you have a, an operating sa- savings on fuel of roughly thirty four hundred per year on the half ton pickup trucks. Um, so again, based on that conservative analysis of twenty five thousand kilometers per year, it'd take roughly, uh, uh, five point eight years to, to pay off that initial difference in the purchase price, which is, um, again, that's a very conservative estimate. We keep our, our half ton pick, pickup trucks for seven years. So they'd be, um, they'd be retrieve, achieving that ROI within the, um, within the lifecycle of the vehicle. Uh, but really, um, we're looking at, um, the, the application of these vehicles from more of an operational standpoint to, can they, uh, serve as a, a true patrol truck, uh, um, considering the twenty four hour operations, um, in, in the winter. So that's kind of how we're looking at it. But I think the, the ROI question from, um, from the, the initial, the initial cost is kind of, uh, made up for with, uh, operating savings.
Any follow up, Counselor Dickert?
Uh, yes, thank you. Uh, my, I was looking at more from the, uh, mechanic side. Uh, I said led to believe that, uh, electric vehicles have less maintenance requirements. And so therefore would it lower the, uh, the workload for our mechanics?
Yeah, that's an excellent, uh, question. So that, I did forget to mention that just on the, uh, there'd be lower preventative maintenance on the half tons. So, so that would further benefit the, the ROI on, on the purchase of those vehicles on the mechanic and labor side. Really where, where our mechanics are, are not spending time where they should be is, um, on the heavy duty fleet. Um, so the amount of time that, uh, a tandem snowplow is in the shop versus what a half ton pickup truck is in the shop is, um, is sort of two different conversations that, that, um, a lot more time and energy is spent on the, the commercial fleet versus the, the half ton light duty stuff. It's, it's still a, a consideration and it will be the time savings, but I don't have a, a firm, uh, just having, you know, we're dipping our feet into this right now, but I don't have a firm, um, analysis of how much or estimate of how much time savings that's going to be for our mechanics.
Okay, thank you. And I did see Director Hoy had stood. So did you have anything to add? No, okay. All right, uh, so that concludes questions from online. We'll go over to Counselor Mackey, then we'll go to Counselor McQueen.
Thanks, Warden Machusov. I'm not going to beat you up, Sean, too much on mechanics. Uh, I think I'm sold on the preventive maintenance aspect and, you know, looking after our stretchers and stuff, but I just want to make sure before I do draw that conclusion that it is true apples to apples. In the private sector, typically mechanics purchase their own equipment. You talked about, uh, forty thousand dollar cost difference between having our own mechanic and what we'd be paying out in shop rates if we were to hire it out. Are we including, um, mechanics' tools and all the costs in that calculation? Thanks.
So we've done a, um, an allowance for tools in, in that, um, total cost of a, a new mechanic. Um, not like a, a full, uh, toolbox full of tools sort of thing, but a, a sort of a nominal amount. So I, I guess in a sense, yes, we have accounted for, for tools. There might be other things that, um, are not fully accounted for, but, uh, Garrett assured me that a hundred twenty thousand is a fairly reasonable estimate for, for onboarding a new mechanics.
Okay, we'll go to Counselor McQueen.
Thank you, Madam Warden. And just on that same line, there's the home tools and the tools and the toolbox, but I'm thinking also with newer vehicles today, there's like trot, like more electronics, exhaust issues. So what's the testing of those, of those systems? And, and that takes more electronic equipment or however, and I, and, and probably the, each manufacturer probably has. And sometimes you gotta buy the software to, to work on that stuff because they haven't passed that thing about the right to fix yet. But anyway, you're working on that. So have you accounted that? Because I mean, it's each vehicle, like, so if it's Truck International or whatever you're buying, I'm sure there's uniqueness and, and purchasing software. So I'd be accounted for that because I know that's something that you take it to a big shop, they already have all that stuff that they could plug in. But sometimes you have to buy individual software for each vehicle too. I understand. Which is to follow up to what, Counselor Mackey, you cover that kind of stuff.
Yeah, so I, you're right that we do have various subscriptions for, uh, for diagnostic software and that sort of thing. Uh, in terms of the actual cost of the mechanics, I think we assume that, that, that cost was, um, already being borne by the county. Um, and there's a shared license across the mechanics group as a whole, so it wouldn't be an extra cost to add on like a new user or anything like that. Um, it would be, uh, uh, and we did account for like a training cost to get the new mechanic up to speed with, uh, Gray County. The Gray County, uh, operations, that sort of thing, but also maybe they need to do some, uh, EV training or some health and safety training, that sort of thing was accounted for in that hundred twenty thousand. Um, but in terms of subscription fees and stuff like that, I think we just assumed that they would be covered under our, our corporate accounts for those various softwares.
Okay, nothing left online, nothing left here in the chamber. Do you continue yet or are we moving to somebody else here?
Still stuck with me for ordinary maintenance and winter maintenance. Uh, okay, so ordinary maintenance, uh, is an operating fund, as I mentioned. Uh, the twenty twenty six ordinary maintenance budget totals four million three hundred seven thousand nine hundred, an increase of two hundred sixty three thousand three hundred compared to twenty twenty five. The ordinary maintenance budget is summarized into five sections. Um, I'll probably just skip over those because I think Pat already mentioned them. Uh, I'll, I'll skip over the descriptions, but road top maintenance, right of way maintenance, maintenance of minor capital, traffic safety device, device maintenance, um, summer supervision. And then notable budget changes, uh, would include the increasing costs for road maintenance supplies based on actuals um, by crews and increasing contracted services or, 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 uh, contract amounts for line painting, pavement marking, crack sealing, uh, based on actual prices. I just thought I'd add to that, um, the cost of road main, road maintenance supplies and contractor work is sort of outpacing the two percent inflationary adjustment that's, um, typically used. So examples of those type of activities would include like tree and stump removal, asphalt patches, the cost of granulars for, uh, road construction or road repairs, um, the cost of lumber, cost of cold mix and so on. And I just, uh, also add there that there's an increase in salaries due to the pending new collective agreement as well.
Okay, any questions there? Not seeing any here or online. Okay, we can continue.
And just finishing off here with winter maintenance, the twenty twenty six budget for winter maintenance totals six million two hundred seventy one thousand two hundred, an increase of five hundred ninety six thousand eight hundred as compared to twenty twenty five. Winter maintenance budget is summarized into three sections, winter ordinary maintenance, winter supervision and winter road maintenance. So notable, notable budget changes are increasing costs for winter control agreements, such as those with our member municipalities and boundary road agreements. Um, increasing equipment use charges for increasing use of tandems. So there's more snow to tandems and snowplows, they're out more, so we're, we're increasing that amount. Uh, and what's driving that is really last winter, as we all, all know, um, but also uh, the winter budget has been under budgeted historically. So last winter was significant, but it wasn't necessarily historical per se. Uh, however, when we only budget on a rolling five year average and we have, um, or say an inflationary adjustment, winters like last winter really tend to stand out like a sore thumb, um, from the budget perspective. And I just add there as well that we've accounted for increasing salaries due to, uh, pending collective agreement.
Okay, any questions there? No, not online. Great. There you go. Thank you very much. We appreciate that very much for all of the details that you've provided. Uh, because we did hear about supervision, are we now on to Manager Irtan's section then? Director Hoy, or is there anything else? Yeah, okay. Oh, okay. The floor is yours.
Good afternoon, uh, Warden and Council. I'm not Trevor, I'm Sean Potter. I'm here to talk to you about, uh, major road and bridge construction. Uh, I kind of base my speaking notes off of the open book, so I'm page four hundred and eleven to four hundred and thirteen for section one and then for fourteen to four hundred and twenty fourth, it's second. Uh, so in the first section, um, we're just going to go over the details. Um, so, uh, where we get our monies from and how we're spending it. Uh, revenue such as gas tax, development charges and OCF are revenue streams. Um, salaries and benefits which account for in-house engineering and contract administration, WSAB, and then the staffing, uh, group benefit as well as other expenses which include monies for land acquisition, uh, professional and consulting fees and the transferred asset management. Uh, all of these vary from year to year and they're captured within the capital projects in the second section. Um, so that I'd like to move on to basically page four fourteen and four twenty three, four twenty, four twenty four. And if I could have Brittany pull that three year map, is that possible? It's not as big as I'd like it to be. That's fine. Don't worry about it. Um, so basically what we're trying to do here is as hard as this might be, I'm not sure how you see it on your screen. That, that's awesome. Thank you. Um, anything that's blue is a twenty twenty six project. Um, so the highlights for this, uh, twenty twenty six budget include, um, Gray Road Two from John Street to, uh, Gray Road Thirty One, this is north of Feversham. This project is a collaboration, um, with deck repairs and waterproofing to be undertaken by our bridge crew south of the actual road construction limits. This is the Bridge Over the Beaver River, um, in Feversham. Gray Road Nine from Hyde Street to Proton Street in Dundalk. This is a full reconstruction partnership with SOKI. Gray Road Twelve is, uh, from Tara Drive to Wellington Avenue in Markdale. Also full reconstruction, also with a partnership, but this one is for Highlands. A utility relocation at the intersection of Gray Road Twenty One and Nineteen to facilitate the future ground event as well as the construction of a new booster pump station, um, which we're hoping will break ground late spring of twenty twenty six. Now that the memorandum of understanding is nearing finalization. Uh, we are also undertaking four bridge replacements, two of which, uh, will be replaced with culverts. Um, another using modular superstructure replacement that will be using the existing abutments. All three are more cost effective than to just replace the bridge like for like. Um, so let's see some savings there. The last one, um, there is no workable option other than to replace it as a bridge, so that, that's how that will be done. Uh, a complete capitalist of the projects, uh, is available in the second section, four fourteen to four forty, uh, four twenty four. Um, and the total for them is twenty six million four hundred and eighty two thousand eight hundred. Brittany, if you wouldn't mind going to that section, page four one four. Next, I'm going to go over our recurring annual programs and resources. And the minor capital programs, we're used to hearing about our asphalt milling and paving program. Um, newer one too, we started in twenty twenty five is culvert lining. Um, this, instead of digging up a culvert, we'll actually put a, what's called a folded form PVC liner through it, heat it up, blow it up, cut it off, and it replaces the liner in place structurally. Um, so it can be considerably less money in a lot of cases. Uh, as well as the replacement of, uh, guide rail. Uh, major bridge and color repairs undertaken by our bridge crew, um, such as the one previously mentioned in Feversham. Construction inspection for major projects. Um, in-house engineering and the tenure bridge designs, the recurring programs and resources costs uh, total three million three hundred eighteen thousand eight hundred. Um, next we have the transfers to reserve, of which there are two. We have our structures and culverts rehab reserve and the asset management reserve. The total combined is four point four one seven million dollars. Uh lastly, there's the municipal transfer. Transition fund. Totalling one point two nine zero four million dollars. Um I know that one has already been brought up for possible discussion later, reducing that or transferring how when when it's going to get paid. So the grand total for um major road and bridge construction for twenty twenty six is. Thirty five million. Four hundred and forty four thousand two hundred. Which is funded by thirteen million three hundred thirty five two hundred in levy. And twenty two million one hundred and three thousand in revenue. I will now try to answer any questions that you have.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? We'll begin with Counselor Mackey.
Thanks for the presentation and I appreciate your efforts to find new technologies that are a little bit cheaper. Any idea, uh when you you talked about the culverts? Has that best practice been shared with the lower tier municipalities? Like are you doing that in your regular uh meetings with the? Managers from the lower tier municipalities, that's the first I've heard of uh. Inserting something inside a culvert and. So. Just like to know more about it.
Uh through the warden, um we have not had conversations with the lower tier about it, uh it's something that I think should always be part of the conversation. We might have maybe hit the jackpot in piece four or three where we have opportunities to change the way that we're gonna do things. And like I said, the 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 last of the four does have to be a bridge, it's just there's no other option.
Okay, uh I did see uh manager Ierton behind you, if you want to just in case there's anything extra he'd like to add.
Yeah, through you, Warden, uh also, I'm. Thinking with the culvert lining in particular, uh that is something that we effectively just started. Uh last year, uh so we've done, I believe, how many? Eight. Eight last year, and then we have a number again this year planned. So the idea is. We're getting an idea whether they uh work, they're efficient, and then potentially as um. We see that we'll bring that to the uh member municipalities, see if there's joint effort to even further reduce uh the amounts, but. Again, once we get an idea ourselves, making sure that it works, so we didn't really want to just. Bring everyone in and then find out it didn't work very well, so um kind of putting ourselves through the first case.
Follow up, Counselor Mackey.
Well, I appreciate not sharing with this Trevor until you know it works, so, thanks.
Okay, thank you. We'll go to Counselor Body.
Thank you, uh Sean, are any of the projects that are on the list for this year where they moved up that would have been done in twenty six, twenty seven, future years, was there anything moved in? And vice versa, was there anything moved out, and is there much of a dollar difference between those two?
Um there wouldn't be much of a dollar difference between what would have been in the past ten year plan for twenty twenty six and what there is now. Um the increases that you see there are not really driven by. Um what we're spending in construction. Um but we did move. A project in, um so there's a section of Gray Road Twelve that's in living township that we've identified that kind of got. Rushed at the end of the year to get in, and it's about a million dollars just. Least of the uh high rises.
And and further to that, is there anything that's been on the list twenty twenty five pass that haven't been done that are going to get? Done in twenty twenty six? Just think about workload.
Uh the two that are. Quick and easy, uh were um Gray Road Thirty, as we have that delay um in being able to acquire property. And the Perkro Bridge, which is actually effectively the same. Um but both of those are on the list for twenty six.
Okay, thank you. Looking around. We'll go to Counselor McQueen.
Thank you, Madam Warden, and just more general on our. You know, I look at the list and what you're, you know, I've been around long enough seeing every doing those roads again. But. I know there was two. We've gone to the page shouldering. For quite a long time now, are you seeing, I have two questions, are you saving, we see, are you seeing benefits? Because when you didn't have the page shoulder, the edge of the roads would get undermined and stuff, and they're pushing it there. So my first question, are you seeing a return on that investment? That we thought we're gonna get, but is it, is it, is it? Are those roads lasting longer because of that undermining of the edge of the shoulder? Uh my second question, I'll ask in a minute.
Thank you very much for not doing that. Um the uh. Um we've done calculations to look at them, um it is. Nearly a wash. Um. But there are. Big benefits, especially when it comes to winter maintenance, to being able to drop file on that surface without worrying about tearing it up and causing more damage. Um as well as a safer refuge area generally for vehicles. Um so. I don't have the exact numbers with me right now, it's been a while since I looked at them. Um but also, we're gonna be um updating our page shoulder policy soon. And that will be part of it, there'll be a a good economic breakdown for you.
And my second question, thank you, I I I think it, person myself, I think it's been working for multiple prong reasons, but. The other part is, I know some of our roads um. Before they got to the point where you had the pulverized and paved, you get another lift. To sort of preserve that and you're adding more, probably more for heavier commercial, is that, has that been proving out as well?
Um generally, when we've been doing an overlay, it's more likely that there was actually only one surface. Horse there. Um there's been a few times where we've done a third lift, but it's more because. It we did a mill and pave. Therefore, the surface is kind of good adjacent to a section that's bad, and we'll just go right over top. Knowing that you're gonna get additional structure and additional life. Um so that's kind of a preventative thing. Um. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I think it was also to do with a lot more commercial traffic, depending on your, you you you're getting a thicker. Mass and maybe for spring or or early spring. Driving and stuff like that, it was proving, or that was the plan, it was giving you that extra protection. On those roads from that heavy traffic. Especially in springtime.
Yeah, through you, Warden, uh. Basically, yeah, uh by doing the second lift, it is uh with our traffic loads from heavy traffic, it is. Um leading to longer service life for those roads. Um we do still have situations because it is a pulverized and paved, it's not like a full replacement of underlying granulars, so. As much as we we kind of. Stir up some of the top granulars, there is sometimes. It could be deeper that the problem's in there, so um you know, over time, those individual locations might see some problems, but usually that's kind of like a. Might be a couple hundred meters of a spot repair through like an area that's maybe poor ditching or a swamp. Um but generally, yeah, the additional uh pavement structure is proving beneficial for the most part.
Okay. Not seeing any further hands here or online. Does that conclude your section then? Or do you have one more to go? Oh.
There you go, that concludes if there are any further questions, I'm gonna close it down.
Okay, thank you very much, supervisor, oh, we do, don't go anywhere, we got one more question here, uh Counselor Echols.
Uh following up on Counselor Body's uh questions about. What's been moved up and it's gonna be done. Is there any projects that I'm missing on the ten year capital plan? That have got pushed off this year? I e by this new County Road Twelve. Project that got bumped up. Is there anything that? Was supposed to be done in twenty six? It's now got pushed to twenty seven or twenty eight? Or thirty five?
Um that's a. A a larger question, a lot of information to go through, I can state for sure that the. Tenure capital plan that was based off of the road exchanges. Um absolutely has. Projects that were removed from it in order for. Uh either they. No longer would be the county's responsibility, and that's why they were moved. Or we believe that the condition of roads that we're going to be taking on are in. Uh in more need of repair than some of our platforms.
Any follow up there, Counselor Echols?
So there was a number in the urban road exchange. That got bumped out. Is that what I'm hearing from that? There was a couple of projects, I was asking on the projects, wasn't the number just? The projects got bumped out because of the urban road exchange? Highway four. In particular, maybe, um. I don't know whether there's. Any in the city of One Sound or. Town of Hamilton. Maybe even Dundalk.
Yeah, through you, Warden, there would be, so any of the projects that would have been in the tenure plan, whether through conversations with the member municipalities. Say. Anytime between uh twenty twenty seven to the end. Uh. Those effectively because the road is being downloaded would uh move down to uh the member municipality for responsibility. Uh in turn, bringing those rural transfer roads forward. They would no longer be the responsibility of the member municipalities. Um whether that's works out evenly for every member municipality. Uh obviously different, but uh that is gonna be. Concept of the urban road that they. Exchange. The one thing that we will note that, because a lot of those jobs coming out. Through the urban download, there is that um payment, the transfer payment that helps to support. Sort of the cost that would have been associated with that. And again, we're all kind of in a situation where we're all underfunded, so again. It's whether it actually covers the full cost of the construction is debatable, but. Um it's kind of a. No win situation for all of us. Like with that one.
Okay, so that concludes the que- questions for this section. Thank you, thank you Supervisor Potter and Manager Ierton for that information. We are now going to move on to an introduction about corporate services from CEO Schertzler. At some point in the next fifteen minutes, we will call a break and then we will do our concluding portion for this day.
Thank you, Warden. So the corporate services function uh supports Gray County Council and all frontline and public facing services. Um these budgets starts at page fifty three in your PDF budget document. So the corporate services is often referred to the backbone of of operations, providing governance, administrative and strategic support. Which allow service departments to focus on delivering programs and services. The overall corporate services budget includes budgets related to council services. Office of the C O, clerk, communications, human resources, finance, I T. Climate change. County property, legal services, provincial fences and more. The overall twenty twenty six budget for the corporate services function includes a net requirement of both operating and capital. Of uh fourteen point seven nine one million compared to fourteen point three four four million in twenty twenty five. So an increase of four hundred and forty six thousand eight hundred dollars. I'll just do a bit of an overview of the corporate administration budget, uh that starts on page fifty eight of your PDF document. So in terms of the administration budgets, the administrative op- operating budget includes uh the office of the C O, the clerks, emergency management, finance, H R, I T. Legal services and communications, and so all these departments and functions are bundled into the corporate administration budgets. The twenty twenty six administration budget includes a net department requirement for both operating capital about nine point five million. Compared to eight point nine six million in twenty twenty five. An increase of five hundred fifty two thousand seven hundred dollars. In terms of some of the highlights and the main budget drivers within this budget. A total investment of of approximately two point eight eight million has been budgeted for twenty twenty six. Which is an increase of a hundred fifty four thousand one hundred over twenty twenty five. As per the investment policy, as noted earlier, any net revenue from investments that exceeds one percent of the levy is placed into the one-time funding reserve. And these are to assist with one-time expenditures and unexpected costs. A twenty twenty six transferred reserve in the amount of two point one five million has been budgeted in the draft twenty twenty six budget. One of the other main budget drivers for the corporate services operating budget is salaries and associated benefit changes. Um again, from all those various corporate services, departments and functions, as I noted earlier. These are primarily based on standard movements on the salary grid as well as non-union COLA increases. Which was calculated based on the approved policy. This results in an increase of seven hundred thirteen thousand nine hundred over the twenty twenty five approved budget. Another ma- main driver, as noted in the document, strapped budget documents, is the community safety and well-being project. This is a shared overall cost between Gray County and Bruce County. It supports a coordinator position as well as overall project costs. The position and the overall project costs are overseen by Bruce County at this current stage. Gray County's total project share in twenty twenty six is budgeted as eighty five thousand two hundred for the community safety and well-being project. That's an increase of thirty thousand two hundred. In comparison to twenty twenty five. I'll now turn it over to Jaclyn to talk about the proposed additional law clerk position. And then we'll turn it over to Tara to talk about the proposed student position in the clerks department. So first, Jaclyn.
Just before you get started, there was a question that got raised by uh Counselor Mackey has raised his hand.
Thank you, Warden. Through you to Randy, Randy, you mentioned the community well-being and safety is a a project, is there an end date to that project and when? We won't have to fund it any longer?
Through you, Warden, um as as no as uh this this project, this program has been created as part of a partnership project between. Uh most of the member municipalities between Bruce County and Gray County, um there's, right now, there's over seventy community partners. Uh sixteen municipalities plus two counties. Um the overarching goal is as 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 council may be aware is is to. Achieve sustainable communities whenever one's safe, has a sense of belonging and opportunities to participate. So I think, I think they're still working through some of the, obviously, the the. Uh the main actions that were identified as part of the overall uh community safety and well-being plan. Um we see huge benefit with respect to the the actions that are coming out of the working group. Uh so at this stage, I don't see an end, there's no end period uh at this stage. Um uh but if that's something my council wants us to explore further with those partners, uh uh. Uh noting that there's seventy community partners involved with that project at the moment, uh we'd have to entertain that and look at that that time. There are also legislative requirements in terms of why. Uh the the province asks us to to create plans throughout the province. And again, we came together as a collaborative group to say, rather than create sixteen different plans, let's create one plan and work together collaboratively, so. Again, we see huge benefits up from coming from this, this, this uh program and uh. Staff recommendation would be to continue that. For the foreseeable future anyways.
Well, it was another gift from the province, I'm just wondering when it was going to end, so thanks.
There's another question over here, uh Counselor Gray.
I do have a question, and and I mentioned this in the budget. And finance committee meeting and and. To thank the C O for touching upon the salary increase in the department, but. I I do need you to expand a little bit more on. Salaries and benefits, it's a line item sixty one thousand, and I made my notes uh just over a week ago. From the two thousand twenty four actual to the two thousand twenty six budget is twenty four percent increase in in two years. And I can accept some new rules, I can accept COLA, I can accept. Different contributing factors, but that's a lot. Of a percent increase. And it's a significant increase again asked or projected in two thousand twenty seven. So can you expand a little more on on what is driving that, are there? Is there shuffling of roles internally in and out, uh in which case I should be looking somewhere else for re- reductions? In corporate costs? Um I know in two thousand twenty four, I believe we had. Uh we may have still had um community transit, net levy was in the city manager or city um. Um cost center, um and it's now, uh there was no levy in twenty five and there's new levy next year, but I think it's an economic development, so. Um is there some um? Shuffling of. shuffling of rules and and salaries in and out of that, that department that I should be aware of?
Through you, Warden. I can, I can speak to some of the costs in terms of the, over the last two years, as you noted. Council may recall, there was a non-union compensation review that was completed in 2023. That was the first compensation review we completed. The last one was 10 years prior to that. As part of that compensation review, there was a bit of catch-up that we had to do with our non-union staff. With that, there was, council may recall that that catch-up, so to speak, was phased in over a two-year period. 2025 is the last, last of that step increase. So there was a 3.5% increase step on top plus COLA on top of that in order to catch up with, with what we're seeing in terms of market comparators. So that's, that equates for probably, let's say, 12% of that 24% you noted. In terms of some of the other pieces that just come to me as a mind, I don't have the budget book in front of me at the moment. But just going back in terms of what, what has been shifted in terms of this piece. There's a couple of things, one that we probably would have to go in a closed session to discuss further about in terms of how the salaries and wages with respect to office of the C O. So without, again, discussing anything further with respect to that, we'd probably have to go in closed session on that particular matter. I don't know what that number exactly equates to in terms of the 24% increase, but I can, I can note, we can explore that further. The other part of this is a facilities, the facilities role, the corporate facilities role that council has supported. Again, we're, we've transitioned that, we've created a new F T position last year or this year as part of that. That was an internal candidate who was successful in getting that position from our housing department. We're still in the process of doing some transition work because his successor was also from a role in the housing department. So it's created a ripple effect. And so, so that position though is now what will be reflected in the C O budgets or the office in the C O budget in 2026 and beyond. That's another increase with respect to, again, that previous council support transfer. There's probably some more pieces. I don't know if others can reflect on some of those pieces. We're going to be happy to provide some further detail, but those are just some things that come immediately to mind as to why there was that percent increase change.
Follow up, Councilor Gray?
I would just ask that my council colleagues acutely remember that line item, and it's another 550,000 projected in 2027. As somewhere to to zero in, we're not doing anything with the 2027 budget this cycle in terms of approving it formally. But that continues to be an escalation in costs significantly above what would be a general increase. So.
Through you, Warden. And in that 2027 projection, there are some positions that were proposed as part of those F T requests previously that would be proposed to start in 2027. Again, as noted through those discussions that we had with Budget and Finance Committee, we would review the current requests, if they're supported in 2026, and see if those additional F Ts will be required in 2027.
Okay, so that suffices then. All right, then are there any other questions before we move on to Solicitor Morrison? Okay, looks like we're ready to move on. Thank you.
Thank you, and good afternoon, Warden, County Council. I am here to speak to the full-time staff request for a law clerk position in the 2026 budget. And so this starts at page 37 of your package. So the current staffing complement for legal services is one solicitor and one law clerk. The two of us provide support to all county council departments and priorities who have legal needs. So as you can imagine, our workload is, is quite cumbersome and we struggle to meet the current demands. We often are seen as the bottleneck and create delays in projects. And we also do have to send some matters out to external counsel just due to timelines and capacity constraints. So we have noticed that we are also experiencing a trend with escalating demands. And this is based on the current county services, but also on new growth projects. And so based on both our current capacity and this escalating demand, we have included this 2026 law clerk position in the budget. And so we do see a number of benefits to the position. And so, for example, we could increase our internal review and knowledge retention capabilities, reduce expenses for external counsel, reignite some pause projects, improve response time and internal service delivery, and then just in general, better support county goals and priorities. So the costs associated with the position are on the next page. And the total net levy cost for 2026 is included as $91,200. And then the 2027 budget would be the full cost. I'm sorry, so that 2026 budget would be with the April start date. So 2027 would be the full year cost for the position. So that's just my very quick, high-level overview of the position, but I'm happy to take any questions.
Okay, let's look for any questions. Councilor Mackey.
Thank you, Warden. How much have we spent in external law services over the last, last year? This is my first question.
So I might look to Nellie for that. We are currently under budget for it because we have been trying to find our groove in our new complement. So if you remember back in 2023, we did have an additional solicitor. So we have been a bit conservative in sending things out, which is also causing the delay in projects getting done because we didn't know how far that current budget would get. Because I'm sure you can imagine that depending on the project, the cost can vary significantly. So one project might cost $2,000, one might be $5,000 or more, but I can look to Nellie to get the current spend, knowing that there are still matters that we have out that we don't have the bills in for yet this year.
Okay, follow up, and then we'll go online to Councilor Bourne.
Thank you. And the second question, we heard some of the justification for this new position is the urban roads exchange. Do you have any idea how much time is going to be required? I know there's a lot of things that we haven't really even thought about that's going to be required in doing this urban roads exchange. And a lot of it is in your department, you know, and assisting owners along those new you know, addresses and things like that. But any idea how much time will be required? Thanks.
So I don't have a clear answer on that either for you. We haven't dug into how much that will be because it's just supported in principle yet. So we haven't started the work and gathering the information about how much would actually be affected from it, but that project definitely is the catalyst to bringing this request forward. We know that we're currently over capacity and we would not be able to support that project internally at the moment. And even going through the gathering for the information and organizing it and getting it all prepared to send it out, we know that's going to impact our current capacity and create more delays with what we already have. And so we do expect it to be a very significant project, but I don't have an exact yet.
Okay, thank you. We're going to online to Councilor Bourne.
And I thank you, Madam Warden, through you, County Council. You know, expanding, Councilor Mackey's original question, I'm all for internalizing things, but if there is a cost benefit analysis, we did this at the local level and we didn't see that much. We're still using external, even though we did have the more internal legal. So do you, do you truly feel that there would be a cost savings from the external? I understand the efficiencies and getting projects faster, which of course there's, there's a soft benefit economically to that, but a true cost savings from spending money externally to spend it internally. Is that, you know, I, I see the business plan, but I just want to make sure from your POV that that would happen.
Thank you. And tying it to the road exchange, we know that there would be significant costs if we were to send specifically that project out, but the same could be said for any project. And I think it's more than just the cost saving. So on, what is that, page 38, the second grouping of bullet points there, we've identified some risks that if we are not adding additional support, what those risks could be. So it's the longer response times, but also the reduced involvement by legal services. And so before we brought in-house counsel into the county, the quality of products that were being put out, I would say they were not what they are currently. So there's more than just the cost benefit analysis there. We also noticed some risk for the employee burnout, the reduced service quality as other risks, not just the, the external cost savings.
That just follows.
Oh, certainly, there is. Manager Reed is lining up to add some additional information, and then I'll go to you for your follow up.
To the original question on how much work we're sending out and the spend to that, I can tell you that within the legal services department, their legal spend to date is $12,000. The issue with that number, and I'll ask council maybe to give us till next Friday to come back with a fulsome number, is if there's work that an internal law clerk could have been doing that, let's say, Pat comes and says, can we, can you help me with this? And they don't have capacity, so they have to go external. Jaclyn and her team would be coordinating that, but that would get coded directly to Pat's budget. So that wouldn't be captured within that 12,000. So we would have to go back and look at all of our legal spend to date across the county and see what of that work an internal law clerk could have done if we had that staffing resource. But I can tell you that year to date across the county currently, our legal, legal fees budget account is $301,000.
Okay, follow up, Councilor Bourne.
Thank you, Madam. That did answer a couple of the questions. It's just more so, I understand the road exchange this year. I just, you know, it's an evergreen job. It's not just for next year. So I just want to make sure that each year, and I understand the soft benefits, I just want to make sure that, you know, when you, when you add personnel, that they'll always be a cause justification outside of those, you know, the law response times and the things that we spoke of. Just that there will be enough work to do that, that we are actually truly savings by, saving by internalizing. So I, I think the question was answered with all the different departments by the director. So thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anything further? No? Okay, all right, not seeing any hands for any last minute questions. Okay, Madam Clerk, we're at five after three, and we know that this meeting's been scheduled to four, so I'm going to call a quick break. If we can be back in our seats and ready to go at quarter after three, you could be right at the lectern and we will start with yours. Thank you. Okay, if I could ask our committee, the whole members to return through their seats and the deputy clerk is going to be here at the table because we have Madam Clerk at the lectern ready to present the next section. And we will be going straight through until four o'clock when we will have to pause these discussions until the following Friday. So. All right, and we're good. We're still recording. Yes. Excellent. All right, Madam Clerk, the floor is yours.
Thank you and through you, Madam Warden. The twenty twenty six Clerks Department operating budget has a proposal for a summer student specific to records management. The student will support our our contract and record specialists with a lot of the organizing, sorting and preparing records to move through their life cycle. Currently, we have point five and of an F T E dedicated to records management. So we feel a student position is an effective and a cost effective way to help get rid of a lot of the backlog that we're experiencing in records management and help support other depart departments across the organization. This is records management is an important part of managing our corporate information. So it's very important that they're managed appropriately. And this is budgeted at just over sixteen thousand dollars for twenty twenty six.
Okay, thank you for that introduction. So I will look around the room to see if we have any questions here. Not seeing hands up here. Anything online? No? All right. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
I think I am to move right into capital from this point.
Yeah, please go ahead.
The Clerks Department has a annual contribution of twenty thousand dollars of a capital project specific to setting money aside for their future replacement or future work on our electronic records management system. So we moved to SharePoint in twenty twenty three, and this funding is to save for the eventual either replacement or other work that needs to be done to support the SharePoint in the future.
Okay, so any final questions for the clerk? Seeing none. Looks like we're good to go. C A R short, sir. You are next up.
Thank you, Ward Matasos. There's two projects that are identified in the C O budget for twenty twenty six in the capital. One is a corporate building condition assessment. This is co-funded with the housing budget. Housing budget includes a hundred and eighty thousand, and in this budget, it's a hundred and twenty seven thousand. And so its total is just over three hundred thousand to complete this project. This is to update our our building condition assessment for all the buildings that are owned by the county. There's three hundred eleven buildings between our housing units and all the other buildings that we have throughout the various departments. It's a critical tool to understand the condition and future maintenance requirements of our building assets. That helps to develop our capital planning forecasts and projections based on projects that are required in order to make sure that our buildings are being maintained. This the other project that's in the C O budget is the project that was identified by the Joint Missile Services Committee and supported by council, looking at a regional waste management study. That's a it's to look at waste operations and identify opportunities for cost savings and operational efficiencies across across the region. This is to be funded from reserves, so there's no levy impact. Hope you take any questions.
Any questions for the C A O? Okay, yes, councillor Dobrine.
Thank you, and thank you. I have to ask, though. I'm having a really hard time getting my head around spending a quarter of a million dollars for a consultation on how to potentially create a waste management countywide system. It just seems so excessive wasteful. Can you just, do you, no pun intended. Do we anticipate it actually requiring two hundred and fifty thousand or we just kind of doing a benchmark?
Through you, Warden. So this project was, council may recall that a few years ago, there was an opportunity for some to use some funding to support a similar project in a similar study. At that time, the funding was was time limited. During that time, and that was about four years ago, twenty twenty one, I think it was, we estimated just over two hundred thousand dollars for that project. Again, we're four years from that. And so that's why we've buffered by two hundred fifty thousand based on what we what we researched at that time. It's it's a placeholder. We hope to, you know, go out to RFP and maybe get better better numbers than than what we're what we're proposing. But we think based on what we've seen in terms of other projects, similar projects that were done in the in and around the area, that's probably a good conservative estimate on what it could cost. Again, the spectrum of opportunities that could come out of that study, it's it can be a range of things, right? It can be easy projects such as development of joint promotional materials and how we might be able to do some further work in terms of collaborating on education and training in terms of how to manage waste and recycling services, et cetera, especially with all the changes that are happening in this space. Everything raved through to regionalizing waste services and lots of stuff in between. So I think there's a number of options and we've identified some of those opportunities through the Waste Management Community Practice. I think it's now digging into some of those further, having hiring experts in this this field that will be able to do some further cost benefit analysis so that this council, as well as each member municipal council, has that information inside what we want to potentially implement going forward.
Okay, good. All right. And we'll go over to councillor Mackey.
Thank you, Warden. And I guess that number does, you know, jump out at you. Part of it probably is because a lot of us haven't, I I know work's been done, Randy, with the county and the lower tier municipalities. There's not really been any reports coming back on, you know, what has been examined, and we've all got different vested interests in this. Some of us have landfills, others don't. Some of us, you know, have surplus landfill space. You know, there's a lot of questions about, you know, when you've already invested in in this, you know, how are you going to be compensating? So is that what this study would bring forward? Would it, you know, tease out more of the the details of a plan? Because I I think we need a triple majority to move towards a, you know, you know, waste management being done at a county level. So that's a hard threshold to meet. So there's going to have to be a lot of questions answered for a number of different municipalities. So are you anticipating that a project like this would answer all those questions? We were just told the other night when we were talking about circular material, you know, and how, you know, our industry and stuff aren't going to get picked up anymore. You know, and a countywide system may benefit. So our our staff are, you know, are we, you know, prompting us to have a serious look at it, but I don't know the answer. So, thanks.
Through you, Warden. And I think that's exactly it. We don't know the answers. We don't have the information in terms of whether or not some of these opportunities to do some some collaboration, cost sharing, regionalization of some services, looking at opportunities to do specialized recycling services in order to enhance our landfill capacity. There's a lot of different things that that we think can be explored through this study. We did do a report to the Joint Missile Services Committee, providing a summary of the information that's been presented to date or or some of the opportunities to collaborate. Again, happy to share that link back with council that was presented earlier this year to the Joint Missile Services Committee. So it provides a bit of the information in terms of what what are some of those opportunities? But until we again dig into that further, we just don't have the answers of whether or not there is cost benefit to to explore some of these things further. And that's that's what the study would provide, that level of detail back to our respective councils to determine what makes the most sense going forward. Again, it could be a wide range of spectrum in terms of options and opportunities to collaborate. Doesn't necessarily mean to be the counties taking on those services. It might just be more municipalities working together to come up with some solutions as well. And that's already happening. Organically, there's municipalities that already share landfill capacity. There's already municipalities that share recycled specialized services. So again, looking for those options, how can that can be expanded? And does it make sense to expand across the region?
The follow up?
Thanks. Well, you know, based on that, I think we need to go ahead. You know, we share a landfill with Greyhounds. We're both just went through budget negotiations and discussions and, you know, we're just spending another five hundred thousand dollars on a shredder. And that's to extend significantly extend the life of of the landfill there. So, you know, if we look at it from a regional perspective, I think there there may be some benefit, but there's big money being spent in everyone's landfill right now, and maybe we can coordinate it a little bit better. So, thanks.
Okay, before we move on, no further questions. Thank you. Oh, sorry, we'll go over here.
Yeah, thank you through Warden. So, Randy, just curious, maybe I missed it. Is how is this this process taking place? Are you using a consultant or is this done in-house? What does it look like in terms of staffing?
Through you, Warden. So the way we would, most of that majority of that two hundred fifty thousand would be consultant costs. There may be some other project costs that are required in order to move the project to advance the project and to do some of that further collaboration. We see the Waste Management Community Practice Group as as that group of experts. They they know their their waste on the ground and what's happening in each of their member municipalities. So I think we would obviously utilize their knowledge and expertise. We've already collected a lot of data and information from that group. So we see that we're hoping that the consultant will be able to hit the ground running, so to speak, in terms of that data and information that's already been collected and gathered. And so so but in in terms of staff resources, it'll likely be the office of the C A O, probably likely through the F U C O, who's helping to project steer that.
Okay. Councillor Eccles.
Thank you, Madam Warden. How does the two hundred and fifty thousand and zero, a few thousand dollars to be able to find the last study that was done in the nineties? And further to that. I guess in the nineties, we did a study and everything was there. And then it never happened. Because municipalities at that time, thirty four or whatever it was, thirty six, were so divided and whatnot that wouldn't go for it. Are we at the point where all nine municipalities are in for this? That's what I worry about. Or is it the study to find a different way? Because all that I've heard here is talking about landfills, landfill, landfill, landfill. Fifteen years ago, we started looking, and there was one municipality that did a lot of work on incineration. And that, you know, for the simple fact that the rest of the municipalities didn't want to get into it, and you couldn't find the capacity. Is this recycling, not recycling, waste management study just going to be on how to better use our landfills and pick up garbage? Or really to find a solution going into the future of making gray, green, or going green and gray?
Through you, Warden. Yes and yes. So so again, I think I think looking at some of the data and information that we've gathered already, we know that there's already going to be some capacity issues in some of our landfill sites. Some municipalities don't have landfill capacity at the moment. And and therefore, there's transportation costs associated with in order to truck that waste to other locations. So I think there's looking at it again in terms of a lens of not just landfill capacity, which I know the ninety eight study was focused in on expanding one landfill site to be able to accept waste from a number of municipalities. So that study, although it was done twenty five plus years ago, looked at some some options at that time. That landfill site no longer is operating. And, you know, maybe operating today if if the decision was to expand that landfill site at that time. But that's that's not the case. We know we have some municipalities that have excess landfill capacity or good good landfill capacity for quite a number of years. That is not the case across the province of Ontario. We know we've heard there's less than ten years capacity, landfill capacity across the province of Ontario, when you take in all the waste that's being generated across the province. So I think I think there's going to have to be a need to look at different technologies as well going forward. And we're hoping that the consultant would be able to explore some of those pieces as well, to make sure that we're not just losing sight of what we have in terms of resources and capacity today. But how do we manage waste going forward when we all collectively run out of landfill capacity? Because some of us are already there. So that's something that I think that could be unpacked further with with the consultants' help and support.
Okay, and the different practices too, because diverting the drywall from our Blue Mountains landfill site greatly extended the life of it because we intentionally diverted that land, that drywall collection. So to for the consultant to look into all the best practices and be able to share and figure out how to extend the life on everyone that does exist as well. Okay. So with that, not seeing any further hands up here, and we will need to keep going. We are almost at twenty five two. So C A O, that was it for you. So I'll welcome up Director Spicer to talk about finance next.
Thank you, Madam Warden.
Um, I touched on uh, the capital project earlier when I mentioned that our financial software Great Plains is coming to end of life. In the 2026 budget, we have $75,000 um, funded from reserve to begin examining the process of um, doing the research to see um, a needs assessment, what we're looking at doing. Um, we're also going to take the opportunity while we're doing this to restructure our chart of accounts. It's currently an alphanumeric, um, which people that have to keep payables absolutely hate because if I'm keying housing, it's one fifteen, LHC, OS ten, it all means something, but it's um, it's not speedy. So we have seventy-five thousand from the one-time funding reserve in this year's budget to begin the process of doing the needs assessment, working with departments. And then over twenty-seven and twenty-eight, um, we have four hundred and fifty-five thousand in twenty-twenty-seven. That's when we would anticipate um, spending the bulk of the money in a hundred and sixty in twenty-twenty-eight um, to complete the project. So a three-year uh, project for six hundred and ninety thousand, all funded from the one-time funding reserve. And that's a, another example of um, how we examine what the reserve could be used for, so for a non-recurring cost.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? See you, Annie. Nothing online. All right. Thank you, Director Spicer. Guess you used up all of your time allowance earlier in the day. And next we will invite Director Morrow to come forward for HR, Human Resources.
Through you, Madam Warden. I'm probably tempting fate not bringing my binder with me, but uh, in regards to our capital project, we have a number of evergreen projects that we are constantly um, putting away money to reserve for, for future. Uh, for instance, the um, non-union compensation and council remuneration survey that we do every four years. Um, most of our projects either legislatively um, supported or need to be done to ensure that we have earn internal equity. Our only capital project that we intend to fully run next year is a project that I detailed to the Budget and Finance Committee, and I believe we've talked about here before, which is um, optimization of our day force scheduling uh, software to have better efficiency for shift um, assignment, shift accepting uh, for our twenty-four by seven um, departments. And that would be long-term care and eventually the paramedic team. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, and it's laid out there in the document as well. Any questions? Not seeing any here in the room, nothing online. Well, there you go. Thank you very much. And now Director McKechnie, if you'd like to come up and talk about information technology.
Thank you, and through you, Madam Warden. Uh, first and always, thanks to uh, Nellie in Finance for helping us put our budgets together. Um, I will talk about uh, the things that are changing and some of the highlights and, and try to keep it brief for you because most of it is laid out there in the document. Um, so two of the big changes, and I have spoken about them before. Um, one, we are looking to move our uh, data center, our hardware here, which was slated for replacement next year into a uh, basically an operational costing model or hardware as a service. So our stuff would be hosted, we would still be able to use it much the same way, but that's like infrastructure as a service model, as that is in infrastructure uh, operating budget now. I'll talk to the actual costing around that a bit, uh, in a little bit. Um, we have also talked previously about decommissioning the um, three uh, data centers in our long-term care homes. That's still the plan. Uh, we did have some lingering budget for those uh, in terms of extending uh, licensing. We've been able to reduce those as well. Um, the intention is that we will be having any expenses uh, for that hardware anymore. So we have those two changes. Um, in terms of the projects next year, we are also looking at replacing our wireless access points and our switches. Uh, both of those have, uh, again, like Muslims and technology increased beyond inflation. Uh, so we're seeing a little bit of increase in terms of what we're putting aside and reserve for those two projects. Um, and we also have some smaller expenses for our firewall. So we have recurring expenses for those on a yearly basis in terms of renewing licenses. Or um, I think in the face of next year, we have a couple that we hadn't replaced that uh, we're budgeting to, to just bring everything up to the same level. Um, as, as always, we have some things that are typical replacements for photocopiers. Uh, our UPSs, which are basically a battery backup for any switch closet, or they also condition the power going in. Uh, those are noteworthy as we are switching most of those to lithium ion batteries, which means they will be a bit more expensive to buy outright, but they will last longer and we shouldn't have to replace the batteries. So overall, we've been able to bring that capital project down um, as well. Um, I believe the only other thing that I would like to draw your attention to is that we do have around $30,000 coming out of the capital reserves for towers. That reserve is home to buy rental uh, for the telcos and ISPs that are on our towers, which we keep in a reserve in case we need to get a pair or replace those towers. But we also use it to inspect them just to make sure uh, we don't have the energy deficiencies that would cause uh, failure of the tower or uh, a health is dangerous for anyone who's working on it. Um, so sorry, that was quick, uh, quick nutshell if there are.
Okay, any questions for what was presented or what was in the book? Not seeing any hands up over on this side, this side, or online. Good. Okay, well, thank you very much. And next we have Manager Hatton on Communications.
Thank you very much, Madam Warden. I don't think we'll talk about social pinpoint anymore right now. Um, uh, so uh, in the budget for communications, you'll see that there are the uh, expected transfers to reserves for um, future communications initiatives. So that would can uh, include contributions to the AV system in here, uh, future updates, as well as the corporate communication strategy, which is going to be due for uh, a refresh in twenty-twenty-seven. Uh, the largest expenditure is the ninety-eight thousand nine hundred for AV refresh in this room next year. Um, that will help make sure that we have a stable, reliable system going forward. Uh, as you know, the system isn't terribly old. It did go in in twenty nineteen. Uh, it was installed by a local company that's no longer operating. So we've lost pretty much all service support for it and we're um, try maintaining it as best we can with the resources we have in-house. But we are um, worried about uh, encountering some critical failures on it. So we do need to look at doing uh, a refresh in the new year for the system just to make sure that we can uh, reliably uh, count on it working for our meetings as we need it to. Um, and happy to answer any questions about those.
Okay, any questions here? Okay, nothing online. All right, well, I, I think we're a very courteous um, council here too. So if the new system didn't have that thing where only one mic could be on, I think, I think we, we all know how to not talk over each other. I think that might expedite our, our efficiency at meetings. Thank you. All right, so with that then, um, we are now back to moving through the pages. We'll look at page sixty-nine about assessment, and that is Director Spicer.
Thank you. Pretty soon you'll be sick and tired of listening to me. Uh, I joked with Randy and Nile yesterday that um, that we have the assessment um, amount that we pay to MPAC. And of course, yesterday afternoon, I received the assessment notice from MPAC advising that our levy will be two million seventy-seven thousand thirty-six dollars and thirty-six cents, which is a three-point seven-two percent increase. And before the budget year starts, I'm already six thousand four hundred and thirty-six dollars overspent.
Now imagine we have lots of questions, but not necessarily for you. So, any questions with regards to the assessment? Right, okay, I can see all the body language around me right now. Okay, thank you for delivering that news. Um, and next we will call up on the Deputy CAO and Belinda Swanson to talk about climate. Oh, sorry, yep, climate change. We're at page seventy-one.
Uh, good afternoon. Uh, climate change, uh, three forty-three. I will keep these comments brief and uh, to the point. Uh, this is a good news budget story. We're coming in at around about a nine percent decrease on last year's budget request. Uh, that includes a full-time staffing position, and actually it would be slightly less even so because given the past conversations around the uh, the council horseshoe, we wouldn't be onboarding that position now until after we've come back to council with the information uh, that we uh, have been asked to prepare um, for in advance of the twenty-twenty-seven budget process getting started. So this is a reduction, includes a very slight modest increase to uh, the Sustainable Agriculture Program, Experimental Acres, as previously discussed. Um, uh, included within the work plan for this year, we're still continuing to work on Resilient Gray and Future Ready, both of which are um, substantially, if not fully funded by grant. And so um, so the work on those two bodies of work will continue. Um, our capital program, this work, it includes, includes that work uh, on, on Future Ready, uh, which, which uh, will be progressing through um, the balance of this next year. Um, so uh, the other body of work that we'll be working through is of course preparing that report to bring back in advance of the twenty-twenty-seven uh, budget conversations, which we expect in late spring. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that and what is on the screen as well. So we'll look for any questions. Counselor Greg.
Uh, I don't so much have a question. I don't support the addition of a fourth um, employee position into the department. I'm comfortable with the three positions that are currently there, their manager and then a term ending two thousand twenty-seven, um, largely grant-funded and another grant-funded position ending two thousand twenty-six. Uh, so I'm not in favor of um, incorporating into the draft further uh, the additional uh, levy-funded position. I understand it's a decrease in levy, uh, but it's increasing resources to that department and I'm not in favor of that. So um, I will just make a mo- motion at this time that it uh, be removed from the budget, that additional uh, employee ask position for two thousand twenty-six.
Okay, I'll ask if there's a seconder. Uh, seconded by Counselor Mackey. We'll let the clerk put that up on the screen. Okay, so it's been moved by Counselor Greg, seconded by Counselor Mackey, that the proposed employee related to climate, climate change be removed from the budget. So on the floor for discussion, uh, Deputy CAO, the dollar figure that's attached to this specifically, as opposed to all the others?
Thank you, and uh, through you, Madam Warden. Uh, so the, the dollar value associated to the position at this point in time is ninety-two thousand three hundred in twenty-twenty-six. Um, which if it's not in this year, uh, uh, sorry, the full twenty-twenty-seven impact would be a hundred and twenty-one thousand eight hundred. I should note that the ninety-two thousand three hundred is actually an overestimate because that's based on three quarters of the year. And as said, it, as said, we wouldn't be bringing this back until after we brought back the report to council, which obviously depending on the basis of that conversation, we don't know whether this position would be something that council would be supportive of at that time. So we would be revisiting it at that point anyway, but it would be slightly less than ninety-two-three.
Okay, thank you. And uh, for clarification, I, I, Madam Clerk, should we be putting in the motion that it's from the twenty-twenty-six budget? Just so there's no confusion about what happens later. Okay, so it's on the floor for discussion. Counselor Nielsen.
Thank you very much, Ward Matrasoff. I mean, I appreciate the, the question or the comment from um, Counselor Greg here. We've asked for a report to come back to council. That report's going to identify whether this position is valid or not. I think moving it now is, is unnecessary, given that conversation's going to happen. If the conversation at the time dictates that this is not the direction council wants to go, then it's not going to be carried forward. Also, I think to what Deputy CAO just said, is that the position isn't going to be hired until that conversation happens. So I don't support the motion because this conversation has already been requested to be had before the hiring of the position.
Okay, thank you. And we'll, was that a hand, Counselor Greg? Okay, uh, you'll need to use the microphone.
I would withhold the comments until last to speak to the motion as I moved it.
Okay, so any other discussion? Okay, I'm not, nobody online. Okay, everyone else has spoken.
Thank you for the opportunity, and I, I, those are fine comments. I see them as two different points. Um, we're talking about the department uh, or the, the actions uh, within the whole going green and gray as a whole. That's what's being reported back. This is specific to the inclusion of resources for the two thousand twenty-six budget. I firmly believe in you can do what you can afford. And we cannot afford uh, continuing to expand our footprint. And we're talking about going in green, and here the first thing we're doing is expanding our footprint. Every time we had an FTE, we're, we're making a, a footprint um, increase. Uh, so you can do what you can afford. Uh, what it comes down to then is internally, uh, when you, work plans are put together by the staff, by the department, uh, you prioritize what is um, available within the resources that are allotted to the department. So I, I see them as two different um, conversations.
Okay, so we've had discussion. And with that, I'll call the question. All those in favor of this motion? Okay, so I'm just going to count in favor. And there is a majority in favor, Madam Clerk. Okay, thank you very much, CEO. Next we'll go to Madam Clerk for council operating, page seventy-six.
Thank you. Um, the twenty-twenty-six council budget is including a uh, net departmental increase of just over forty-seven thousand dollars. That increase is primarily made up of, um, there's a slight increase in some association and membership fees that are um, allocated to this budget. There is a cost of living adjustment of two-point-seven for council compensation. Um, additionally, increases are being seen in the cost of travel, conferences and um, meal expenses. So the budget for twenty-twenty-six has been adjusted to reflect the current spending trends related to those. Additionally, there is with an incoming council, we're anticipating purchases of new phones and laptops coming um, from reserve and also um, a joint orientation scheduled in November of twenty-twenty-six for all elected officials across Gray County. And that is also proposed to be funded from reserve at um, twenty thousand six hundred dollars.
Okay, any questions on this? Counselor Echols.
Uh, thank you. Through you, Madam Warden, DeTerra. Uh, I'm Kirk. The increase of thirty-eight thousand three hundred for the twenty-twenty-six computer and cellular, is that an annual amount that we put in there? It's not spread over the four years then, is that what you're saying?
Mary Lou can provide further information on that.
Through you, Madam Warden. We do a transfer to reserve for the refreshes, knowing that we're doing a refresh every four years based on the life cycle of the asset. And we time it with the, the changeover with council. So you're seeing the expense, but then there's a portion funded from reserve. So annual contribution to reserve in order to fund the replacements.
So it's, that's what I said. It was thirty-eight thousand a year that we're putting in for four years for this. It's not, you know, for the computers and phones, for the eighteen counselors. Is that what I'm looking? You know, for the computers and phones, for the eighteen counselors, is that what I'm looking at? So it's not split over four years, it's, or is it split over four years, that's what I'm asking here.
So the purchase occurs in one year. And then there's a transfer to reserve. Over four years to put away enough money. For the purchase in the one year. So say for example, it was a forty thousand dollar budget, we put away ten thousand a year. So that in the fourth year, there's forty thousand dollars to make the purchase. So it avoids a spike in the levy in the year that we have to do all the refreshes.
So it's a one year draw of thirty eight thousand, there'd be ten thousand going in on a continuous basis, in the twenty twenty seven budget, I don't see anything going in. That's because it says here, an increase of thirty eight thousand, that's where I'm. Jumping from. Tell me that there's ten thousand a year, every year, not thirty eight thousand in twenty six, so that we have that spike. That's what I'm trying to get at there.
Thanks to Garrett for looking this up, so I think it's a confusion about what accounts we're hitting. So there's a transfer to reserve in account sixty nine one hundred, which is the annual transfer to reserve. Sixty three oh forty one is a computer purchase account, and that's where you see the refresh of the laptops and. All the technology. So in twenty twenty seven, you won't see any expense in six three oh four one because we're not buying computers. But you'll see a transfer to reserve in sixty nine one hundred. Yes, so we do a reserve analysis on a regular basis, based on the most recent prices, and then we say, how much money do we need in the year of the refresh? And divide that by four, and that's what the reserve contribution becomes. So because we're not buying computers every single year, you won't see anything in the computer account every year.
Yeah, thank you, and that, but just the way this is written, it says the increase of thirty eight thousand, you know, would have been the expense of thirty eight thousand, we're good, it's. Fine. Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Okay, any further questions, Counselor Greg?
Thank you for the opportunity, I'll just hit on a couple of quick things because I'm reading off the spreadsheet document, it highlights it really well, the two thousand twenty four, twenty five budget, twenty six budget. I'm acutely concerned. With under council. In the two thousand twenty four budget, we had eighty thousand dollars approximately for travel and meal expenses, we're now budgeting one hundred and twenty five thousand five hundred. We had conferences of seventeen thousand, budgeted two years ago, we're actually over budget by about thirty six percent this year is where we're trending, we're budgeting thirty seven thousand. I'm not wanting to make a motion here today on the exact value of what it should be. But I would hope that someone would second my motion to have staff report back. For next Friday. What a reduction to one conference. For county counselors annually next year in two thousand twenty six would be in conjunction. So we can evaluate fairly what this year's cost to the taxpayer are, and we can show how much we have escalated. This department. As a council, we still would have the opportunities to go to conferences, we have the opportunities through the lower tier, where many of us are already signed up for Roma. We can still go to AEMO representing our lower tier municipality, we can still be at AEMO and drop by at a. At a county event representing the county if we're down there, so we don't have a lot of sacrifice. But I think this indicates that council should be at least supportive of not having a debate today. But let's actually have the clerks bring back a report that would show what the one conference a year would be in relation to this, because. That type of escalation in two years. Is absolutely unsustainable, and it warrants at least having the a review come back before us next Friday. So that's my motion that staff report back for next Friday. What attendance for one conference per year for council would be, there's still the alternatives of having exclusions such as the warden. It goes with the role to of a warden to have various opportunities beyond that general provision for council.
Okay, so that's the motion that's being put on the floor by Counselor Greg, seconded by Counselor Mackey, it's now on the floor for discussion, it would be helpful to have that up on the screen, so there we go, the Deputy Clerk has. Oh, it was there, it wasn't there. Okay, and the recommended, the motion that has been moved and seconded is that. Staff bring back information to the December twelfth committee of the whole meeting, showing attendance for one conference per year per council member. Okay, any discussion on this motion? We have a. Okay, the, yes, there is somebody online, I don't know who it is.
That would be me.
Counselor Carlton, go ahead, please.
Thank you, just a question, was twenty twenty four not the year that we did only have one conference? There was one year of this term where we each only had one conference, and then this past year we were back to our two, so I'm wondering if. That explains that huge change in dollar values.
So it would, but I don't know if that's the the figure that that the motion is asking for. There is a comparison from the previous year, but. So that's a. Did you want to respond to that, Madam Clerk?
I would have to check because timelines are blurring for me a little bit, but I think twenty twenty four was the year that council decided to reduce down to the one conference, yes. So that was. I think is where we ended up at that seventeen thousand dollars in conference registration, and then that's since then probably roughly doubled plus. For twenty twenty six, well, twenty twenty five's budget in twenty twenty six, as the proposal was to move back to to two conferences per year.
Okay, so that is the motion that is on the floor for discussion, so I guess theoretically it shouldn't take long to add up. The second conference of each council member. Okay. So any further discussion? Okay, I'll call the question, all those in favor? Okay, so that motion carries, okay? Thank you, that was it for you, Madam Clerk, great. Okay, so we are now just past four o'clock, and we are going to need to make sure we absolutely have enough time next Friday, so we are going to have to adjust the start time. Of next Friday and extend it to four thirty as well to make sure, so. This will allow a week for all of the busy mayor and deputy mayor schedules to make that accommodation, as there are so many community events happening at this time of year. So watch for that update in your in your schedule, and at this point in time, Madam Clerk, just a motion to adjourn. Okay, all right, so the clerk informs me because this is really only part one of the conversation that will continue next at our next meeting, our next committee hall meeting. The only thing we need to do at this point in time is a motion to adjourn, may I ask for, thank you, moved by Counselor Pringle, seconded by Counselor Patterson. Any discussion on adjourning, all those in favor? And that motion is carried, all right, well, we'll see everybody back for council in between that.